Good morning, everybody. We are going to get the Board of County Commissioner meeting going. Today is June 24th, 2025. It is 11:02. This meeting will be streamed live on the RBC YouTube channel. If you'd like to participate in this meeting and are unable to travel to Rangelie, we will be having a virtual link to the meeting set up in Meeker at the Historic Courthouse, 555 Main Street, Third Floor Hearing Room, Meeker, Colorado. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment period. Any member of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you're requested to limit your comments to three members' minutes per member or five minutes per group. The public comment time is not for questions and answers. It is your time to express your views. To ensure there's adequate public comment time, please provide your name and address prior to the meeting by contacting the board assistant at 970-878-9683. If any member of the public would like to comment at this time, please state your name and contact information for the record. Do we have, we'll start in the room. Any public comments in the room? Not seen any, anybody online. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Hi, my name is Wendy Gillard. My, you already have my address and my contact information. I wanted to comment on your policy for your public comments or for your, help me out here, policy for, what's the draft policy you're working on? My brain.
Public comment policy.
There you go. Okay, so you're right. So I had sent out an email lately, last night, and I don't know if you were able to read it or not, and I won't go into it in detail. I did want to caution you on some, a couple of areas where you may have some, I'm sorry, going through some treatments and everything's working right. You might have some problems running into your ADA compliance things. Were any of you able to read that?
I haven't had time to fully read it.
And it was a long one, of course, because it's me. Anyway, so I just wanted to, one, I would encourage you to not take down YouTube channels. I think that it doesn't show transparency and the county, the people of the county feel like that. I've seen comments online and things like that. I think that a, I understand that I heard someone say they wanted to purge and maybe just keep it for 24 months. And one was like wiping it out after 24 months or doing a rolling 24 months. I think, I think you should have them all up personally. But even if you did a rolling, I think that would be better because they would only be taking off two recordings per month, really. I don't think that it's okay to quit live streaming because you'll run into your ADA compliance where people can't, that are not able-bodied, they're not going to be able to come and participate as any other able-bodied person in person, and then your recording would be later on. Also, recordings are able to, are able to be amended, manipulated, whatever else. So not that you would, I don't know, but I think that it would put some question into the public's minds. I think that signing off after the public comment, I, I, I understand that you want to ensure that no one is interrupting during other parts of your meeting. There are ways to mute your people online and that, again, that runs into like, how is somebody going to be able to participate as anyone else, especially if you're live streaming? And then I was going to say that also that on occasion you guys wanted to, you know, just take care of something right away. Or if you were going through your meeting and you had questions for the public as I was listening to the recording, you would not be able to ask those that were not signed online or those that were watching live stream unless you were, you know, moderating the comments on the YouTube channel. Anyways, and then you can read the rest of my email on that. I really want to address the, the DHS Social Services part of the meeting that you had before, that the SB 17-016 was mandated and repealed according to Carmen. There's a hotline, there's team meetings, all can join the meeting, family engagement meetings, anyone can join. That's not actually true, and I imagine maybe the anyone she might be talking about are maybe the reporters. I'm not sure. She didn't clarify there. In Rio Blanco County, there is a red team. There's a type of referral a time and it's all based on criteria. It doesn't need to be discussed with a bunch of people. And that's a problem that has, that there has been in smaller counties, and I believe that Don Stearman said that. Mandated reporters, they, they are able to get information on the, on the report. They have the, they're supposed to be receiving and a letter that says that, you know, what, that they receive the referral, the name, the date, the problem, that whether or not this was screened in or out and why. Within 30 days, they have some information that they can get, and within 90 days, there's information that they can get. And that's mandatory reporters. And there is a lot of people that report that are mandatory reporters that aren't necessarily the police or the schools or the therapists. Don said that there was always, and I quote, an issue with CPT in Rangelie, which is, I just feel like this part of this discussion was just lies from the pit of hell. That Nabilah was looking into an attempt to reestablish, and there were problems with people signing a confidentiality thing. Like, if you go back to that recording that's not actually up on YouTube, but you can go back to the recording, I have it recorded myself, to June 21st of 2022 when Nabilah and Ty Hamblin, Police Chief, came to talk to you about the Child Protective Team and other problems within DHS. And Don said that Nabilah talked to Don and said that it's just going to be a mess and it was, she was going to do away with it. And that is not how they presented that at that meeting. I've spoken with Nabilah many, 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 many times in the last year almost. That's not how that went down. And, you know, we have reported to other areas of our state governments, and I think that that would be something that they would not be happy to hear just lies. They said that there's state audits each year or quarterly. I don't know which is it, is it quarterly and each year? And if there is a, if, if it's severe, there's corrective action taken if our county didn't process a referral properly. When? A year later? When? And then there is an interdisciplinary team, internal, and it can be other counties. Confidentiality, like it's need to know, like therapists and other mandatory reporters as written in statutes. Also, it does talk about reporters that are not mandatory. Ms. Carmen had sent me an email that said a lot of these things. And she said the APS team is not, it doesn't go through the red teams. And I had asked her, you know, how is that assessed? And the APS team was not addressed, and Carmen said it's a similar thing is how it goes. She, it wasn't addressed with me. Don said if there is a severe case that they can call the judge and for removal and make arrangements with the court. But I wanted to bring up, do you remember when I first came to see you and those two little boys and how they had been here for over a year being tortured and how there were so many referrals? And if there, if it was severe, that there could be a removal. Why? Why was there no removal? In the confidentiality, there was no confidentiality problems with your mandatory reporters, with anyone signing a paper. Remember Ty talked about they all signed a confidentiality agreement every single time that they met. And it was, and he said it was directly through heritage something. I don't remember. I didn't write it down for this comment. And I wanted to remind you too that, that this is the exact opposite of that meeting when, you know, like Jennifer said that like, when I found out the Child Protective Team was not established, we need to reestablish it right away. And so that tells me that probably was a good thing for our county. And Jennifer felt that way from her experience in DHS. And 2017 is when they didn't make it mandatory. But you could still do it. Now Jennifer was still part of DHS, the director then. And then Don didn't come in to play until what, 2020, what?
Hey Wendy, Wendy, your 10 minutes is up. We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Can I just give you, so you can just write down these statutes really fast, just the numbers, and then I'll get off?
Why don't you send us an email, please, with all of those?
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none. This is a tentative agenda which includes all information available as of June 20th, 2025. The final tentative agenda will be posted at the RBC Historic Courthouse, 555 Main Street, Meeker, Colorado, and at the Rangelie Town Hall, 209 East Main Street, Rangelie. We'll move on to line item D.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda. I can't believe we have any changes today. Will we approve the agenda as it is written?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Kristy, will you please call the roll?
Skitchfield.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Overton.
All right.
Moving on to line item two, the consent agenda, line item A.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the below items on the consent agenda, which include the meeting minutes from June 10th and the June 20th payroll management report.
I'll second them.
I have a motion and a second. Anything from either of you on those? Kristy Lee, please call the roll.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Skitchfield.
Motion passes. Moving on to line item three, business. We will be having a presentation of the protest valuation report by Renee Nelson, Rio Blanco County Assessor.
Go on ahead.
Well, I don't think he does want me to come and shoot me, but.
We're not going to do that.
Okay, well, this year, I know we had a light year because we did increased values again, but I think people are realizing that's just the world we live in right now. We had 50 real property protests and they're all done now. This hold over here means that we hadn't had time to finalize that because we physically inspect most of them and so we didn't. Well, I can get you number of what we've adjusted, denied, and satisfied later, but we don't quite have those ran yet. As far as personal property, notices went out on the 13th and as of yesterday, we had no protests. But that doesn't mean they're not going to come in because that's personal property and oil and gas. And so there's a chance that we can still get those due date is Monday, the 8th. Post. So that is tough because the postal services, we all know, is, you know, we might get it, I don't know when. So, and we valued 50 personal property accounts with best information available. And part of that reason was is the declarations that we sent to the printer were never mailed out. The printer took them to the post office and they must be still in Arizona somewhere because they, nobody that I know of received a personal property declaration. So, but we did email and call as many companies that we knew should have been sending their stuff back to. This year, we had three drilling rigs in Rio Blanco County. Only one rig operated for a year. There was one rig that was apportioned back and forth. And I don't quite understand this, but there were actually, I think, two rigs that went back and forth. We didn't have any stacked rigs. Those are the rigs that were just not. So the county's value is down about 9%. The current assessed value is 753,971,610. That's down 69,723,390, which calculated about 9%. And I don't want for that to change. We do have some current audits we're doing for our own gas. That, that'll be, it takes a while to get those done. We'll see. But state assessed, we don't know what will happen, but I can tell you that the throughput through the pipe that we locally assess, not the state assessed pipelines, the throughput is how much, how much gas is going through that and through the plants. It was down this year. So chances are state assessed will be down as well. Because the majority of state assessed is pipeline. So with that, I guess later on, I will get you some new numbers when we know protests. I know we're scheduled in July to have county board hearings. And as soon as Vicki gets those appeals, she gets that to us and we start the work.
We will be watching for them. You had mentioned that there were some that you were having audits. Mary Ellen was doing some audits. Are those completed yet? Are those still?
We have a 2024 audit that's getting closer to being completed, and we've got a couple to start, so those are going to drag out. I did run a report this morning that shows what changed, and I can also send that to you guys. I mean, it's not a surprise. It's the industry that dropped the most, even though residential, commercial, and vacant land went up some. When your county is, the majority of the value comes from industry, the value dropped. About 47% drop out of the data, the industry.
Overall, are certain companies, is it?
We don't take, we haven't had time to look at certain things, but overall, it's definitely dropped. And it's not just oil and gas because it's your pipelines, your gas plants. You know, everything kind of rolled back to your companies, but there's different people involved. So you can't really say it's one particular company.
No, but I'd, I'd be interested in seeing part of the industry is causing.
Well, the price was down. And we lost value, of course, with coal this year. Production was down a little bit. Price was about the same, but coal a while went away. The Wilson Creek Field is completely gone. We used to value, even the last few years, we've got some value out of some of that equipment, but they, we've been there and they pulled all the equipment. So, yeah, the price, you know, you lost two pretty sizable accounts right there, so.
Renee, is there any way, like, the, do you recall when the last time was that the property value, that the assessment came in around these same numbers? We had done that before.
Yeah, I could go back to, I should have looked at that big spreadsheet, but it hadn't been that many years ago. You know, we fluctuate a lot. Yeah, and then we jumped over a billion and then we dropped back down. But I remember when we went to seven, I, and I can look at that big spreadsheet. I have a, I have a spreadsheet back to 2,000, and then of course we keep track of everything.
You, those valuations that never got mailed, do you have to do something about that? Is that statutory? Do we have to make sure those get out or?
Well, the company took them to the post office and they had proof that they had delivered it. But we kind of thought that maybe some of the smaller, like, say, stores that get. like say stores that get one got it because they did turn stuff back in that wasn't printed off of the computer. But we don't have any way and my one employee called every post office in Tempe, Arizona, and of course they wouldn't talk to her. So, uh, that's why we contacted a lot of businesses. And we did have this best information available, so they do have the notice, the notices, the value went out. People have gotten this because we've gotten some back. So people will get those. They have the right to appeal. And so if we had something wrong because they didn't get back, we, we get it straight. And a lot of people, Sean and I talked about this yesterday, they aren't really using the paper stuff anymore. They just print, we send all that out and they just print something off of the computer and stamp it and they change. And you know it's flat out lie because you've been there and you've seen the piping, new equipment, so. I don't know, it's kind of hard. And, you know, we do make them sign a declaration because they need to sign something, so they all did that. Everybody that filed with us, except the people that don't file, and that happens every year. Some people just don't file this. I know Becky knows what I'm talking about because you had to throw those out when we went this stuff. But the company, I tried to get a little money back or something and he's like, well, we delivered them, but then when we didn't have our work done because we, we were, it's hard to get everything valued and they wanted it a month ahead of time. So they were very, very easy to work with when I said, oh, I'll get it to you and I can get it to you. They, they didn't, they penalized us at all for that.
Did you try contacting the post office general or, or somebody to investigate that a little bit or?
That company.
Not that big a deal.
Well, the company checked. So they can't figure out where those are at either. Because company would give the print and try to figure it out as well. And maybe they did get it, you know, we don't have proof one way or the other, that nobody, that we know of got were going on the fat.
So if we did that and nobody got them and nobody cares, how much money we spent on it?
I'd have to go back and look.
Is that a substantial amount?
Well, it's not huge.
And so it's not the, because I think, as I recall, getting the, the form that tells you how much the value is or not the form, but the little.
That's your notice of value.
Okay, so.
What is it then that didn't go out?
People in the have, that have a business.
A business.
For oil and gas.
Okay.
And the other thing is, that's something that's done every year and that is the taxpayer's responsibility to notify the assessor of that. It's not all on our back. They have a responsibility as well.
Pretty hard though. You're gonna say how much money do I owe you?
Well, but if you don't, we have the right to use best information available and come up with whatever we want, which we tried to. We always go out and look at, like if we're doing, say, oil and gas, we would look at what the average uh, production in that area and the prices are. If one company doesn't report to us, we don't just go grab a number out of the sky. We do a lot of research.
Well, I think in your department too, correct me if I'm wrong on this Renee, is that you guys actually do spend a lot of considerable time actually out in the field looking at those things versus, you know, from surrounding counties just saying, we'll take it, we'll take it, whatever it is, we'll take it.
Yeah, like right now we have the contract guy that works for us out of Oklahoma and he's in the field, he was in the field before six yesterday morning, got back at nine o'clock last night, he was gone again this morning at five thirty, so he, he checks a lot of wells for this county. And that's very useful to us.
So just making sure that I understand it because you said, okay, so we went, valuation in general or total went down by nine percent. But our homes and property values went up, but gas and industry isn't, has dropped enough to pull us back down.
Right, yeah, they had the majority of the value.
Right, okay, just making sure I had all that in my simple brief.
That report that you have, does it show that how much the homes went up?
Yeah, I brought my. I can, I just, I just got it finished this. So yeah, it explains it. And it also shows you if we do lose personal property, which that keeps coming around all the time. How much value would you lose?
And then they'll tell them what the state legislature will do to us in the meantime.
I'm sure Bat and November will end up something more to do.
Other questions? Any other questions, Renee?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks Renee. Thank you for, when you forgot me, you put me on first so that I can.
Renee, did you say you're gonna email us?
You can have it, that's your call. I know how you are, you wanna snoop around in it, so. You wanna see if I'm doing my job, I know. Yeah, but I'll email it.
Thank you ma'am.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on to line item B.
Okay, line item B. Madam Chairman, I make a motion to accept the public comment policy.
And I will second that.
I have a motion and a second on the public comment policy. We had a a long discussion during the work session on the public comment policy. We also went through it line by line at the last BOCC meeting in Meeker, so, um, do either of you want to add anything to that?
I just thank Vicky and Chrissy for cleaning it up and making it look and sound much better than initially.
Yes, thank you guys. Anything from you?
Oh.
Okay. Chrissy, will you please call the roll?
O'Hara.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Scratch fill.
Aye.
Motion passive. Moving on to um, line item C, discussing the YouTube streaming, uh, for BOCC meetings and special work sessions. And we kind of jumped ahead and did, had that conversation in the work session. Um, and I think the conclusion of, and you know, let me know if I'm wrong, is we're gonna continue the way that we've been doing things for right now, not changing anything, but still having the conversation and, and, uh, Trevor's gonna get us a write-up of those different platforms and, and how each of those function off of each other, if they function off of each other.
Yeah, the, the, uh, we're very concerned about the public getting access to our meetings. So we are investing in some more technology to make it easier and more reliable. And we're going to try to, uh, keep the meetings as accessible as possible and in that, we're getting a report from Trevor that we talked about this morning in the work session. And as soon as we get that back, we will do a final evaluation and come up with a final decision, is that the way I remember it?
Yeah, just the only addition I would say is also on the ADA piece of it, they have backed off on a lot of that. But makes it easier. We don't have to have every word a hundred percent accurate on the closed caption piece of it and the other piece I think was just, um, looking forward to getting our new communications person on board and having her stay on top of that and make sure that we're headed down the right path.
I don't think any decisions need to be made today.
No, and when, as we discussed it in the ba, uh, in the basin round table.
No, we did not.
In too many meetings.
In the work group, uh, work session, um, we actually did not have that piece in the policy. This, this piece was not in the policy.
Right.
We're good.
Okay. Anymore on that?
We're come.
We're to come. Moving on to, uh, line item D, we are going to have a presentation by, um, Lisa Heeman on our county funds.
You're muted, Lisa.
I'm going to need to share my screen, so let me see if I can do that real quick.
We see it.
Okay. Let me see if it's. Okay, can you see it now? See the full screen?
Uh, no.
We're seeing your, uh, your screen.
Okay. Okay, how about now?
It's still the same.
Still the same, but we can see what you're presenting, so you can go ahead.
Is that gonna work for you then?
Yeah.
Okay. So what I did is put together a budget presentation to show you guys where we are currently, um, with budget to actual um, information and as compared to prior year. And I started with the general fund and kind of broke down the major funds individually and then condensed some of the smaller funds together. Um, so the general fund is the operating fund for the entire county, um. It accounts for all activity that is not restricted by revenue source to a specific purpose and it's not business type activity. So it's not something money-making like the solid waste landfill. Um, and the funds have few restrictions on them unless you get some kind of budget or create some internal restriction. So the general fund currently, um, budgeted revenue was about ten point three million dollars. The county has brought in about six point nine million, which is sixty-six percent of, or sixty-seven percent of budget. And that compares to the prior year where there was about seven point five million, um, collected at this point. Um, and it's less this year, but that is almost entirely because property taxes dropped for twenty twenty-five as compared to twenty twenty-four. Um, other revenues are up, um, sales tax revenue is up in the county and I've got a slide next that shows that. Um, you're at about twenty-seven point nine percent of expenditures that were budgeted for the year, so you've, you budgeted fifteen point five million. You've col, you've spent about four point three million. Um, I looked through and looked at the general operating expenses in the general fund to see if those were tracking with where you would expect them to be according to budget and they are. So things like wages, operating supplies, utilities, things that are ongoing expenses regularly throughout the year should be at about forty-two percent of budget and they're all between thirty and about forty-two percent. So those are tracking well. Um, and then the, we know that those seasonal and grant-based expenditures will fluctuate throughout the year, so those are, those are what's bringing down that, that average. Okay, so here's something on the general fund taxes. Property taxes were budgeted at about two point five million this year. Last year they were about three point three million, so last year at this time, we'd collected just about all of the property taxes, probably some back delinquent taxes as well. Um, this year we've collected about ninety percent of property taxes. Um, and so we're at two point two million dollars this year as compared to three point three million last year and two point five um, in budget. Specific ownership taxes are at about twenty-four percent of what we had expected in the budget, so they're down a little bit. But sales taxes weigh up, so sales taxes about one point ti, nine million that we've collected. We only budgeted about three million and prior year actual was about one point one million. Um, and some of that is because of a large collection from sales tax in April related to, um, some capital um, purchases that were made in industry during April or March or April probably. Um, Roden Bridge Fund property taxes, as I just mentioned, for the general fund are significantly less than last year. Um, we budgeted about four point one million and have collected ninety-one percent of that. Um, in the prior year, the budget was five point three million and ninety-five percent had been collected, so that's, that's the big difference in revenue. Um, on the expenditure side, there were already significant capital costs related to bridge repairs last year at this time. So that accounts for some of the difference between expenses in the prior year as compared to the current year. Um, a lot of those capital expenses that have been budgeted in Roden Bridge haven't been started yet or completed. So the budget is eleven point eight million, um, and they've spent about twenty percent of that through, uh, May thirty-first. Department of Human Services. Um, the difference between the current year and prior year is the prior year is including the electronic benefits, transfers, revenues and expenses, and those haven't been adjusted in the Department of Human Services budget at May thirty-first. So that six ninety-eight, oh, six nine represents the actual cash settlement that's been received by the state through May thirty-first. And the expenditures are the actual expenditures of the fund. Those EBT funds are included in the budget and they're also included in those prior year numbers. And that's the money that, um, constituents or clients are receiving directly from the state and it, it gets recognized by the county because they are constituents of the county. So the largest expense there is SNAP. That at the end of the year, that's probably gonna be about two million dollars that will come through and show up as revenue and expense on the budget side, but it's not included in these numbers. So again, revenues are about seventeen percent of what's expected and expenditures are about twelve percent and that's because of those EBT balances. Um, the use tax fund accounts for, uh, construction material tax, construction materials, use tax and the motor vehicles use tax. Um, and so far this year, the county's collected about four hundred and eight thousand dollars of the budgeted one million, sixty-eight thousand, it's expected, that's about thirty-eight percent of budget. Um, prior year actual was four hundred and sixty-four thousand at this time. And I broke that down a little bit so that you can see where the, where the decrease is coming in this year. Um, last year there was about two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars that was collected in construction materials use tax at this time compared to a hundred and six thousand this year. Um, but this year motor vehicles use tax is way up as compared to prior year. It's up about seventy thousand dollars. Um, and some of that is probably fluctuations with construction merit materials use tax where that's based on projects that are going on and timing of those projects. Motor vehicles use tax is a much more regular tax that's collected throughout the year. Um, next I've got the solid waste landfill. Um, I looked at this and it's consistent with last year, but only at about ten percent of what is budgeted for revenue in this fund. So I compared it to last year for each of the months to see when those large commercial collections come in. So I compared it to last year for each of the months to see when those large commercial collections come in. Last year it looks like they came in. Um, later in the year, in the summer and in the fall, so we haven't seen that activity yet this year. Um, which is keeping those revenue collections low as compared to budget. Um, expenditures are tracking where we would expect them to be with budget, especially those regular ongoing. Um, salary expense, operating expenses. Are between thirty-five and forty-two percent. Um, and then some of those other larger budgeted expenditures. Will happen a little bit later in the year.
Lisa, if I might?
Yes.
Mention. Okay, so just to, you know, keep in mind, the large commercial is typically that, um. The soils that we get and normally Roden Bridge gets multiple, you know. Hundreds of thousands of dollars of invoices that kind of stack up because they have to actually process those. Through Chevron's particular. Software. And so there's always a timing process that all of a sudden we start getting all these, but then it lags behind sometimes three months to. Four or five months, um, before we actually collect those revenues. So just keep that in mind, I don't know that we've actually had downturn as far as the actual collections is, or. As far as the production of those, you know, acceptance of those materials of the landfill, I think it's more. The process that it takes for Roden Bridge to, or solid waste landfill to bill those out, so it is a long delayed process.
Yes, thank you, Becky. Um, the communications fund, um, this is tracking pretty closely with where we would expect to be with the budget. We're at about thirty-six percent of revenues, about fifty thousand dollars less than the prior year in service fee revenue. Um, has been collected this year. Um, and we're at about thirty-seven percent of budgeted expenditures, so that one's. Tracking pretty well, a little bit less than what would be expected, but pretty close. The capital projects funds, these fluctuate quite a bit. Across the year and I would expect in most. Of these, if they're, they're outside projects, um. That we would see a lot of that activity coming later in the summer and in the fall, so the capital improvements plan, um, I believe. Um, most of that is that big Meeker Airport project. Um, and then there's also a little bit, there's about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that was budgeted for Columbine Park in there as well. Um. And I believe all those two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars in expenditures are for that, that Meeker project. Um. Most of the capital expenditures fund budget was for, um, the sheriff's department. Um, and then there is a little bit in there for the fairgrounds and that's what expense has been made so far this year, that fifteen eight ninety-seven was for, um, the fairgrounds. Uh, CCITF. Um, we've collected about two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in interest this year, investment income, so that's half of what we expected through the end of May. Um, and then expenditures haven't been made yet. Um, there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Rangeli School District and then about eighty-three thousand one hundred and sixty for other projects, and I believe this was the. Um, museum project was budgeted for in there, the museum roof. Um, the American Rescue Plan includes those LATCF funds and the. Other COVID money, the, the ARPA funds, um, and those have all been. Committed at the end of the, the ARPA funds were all committed at the end of the year for. I believe it was the GPON project that was going to be. Taken care of with the ARPA funds, and then there are other, um. I think it's XSG PON, XGS PON. And a security system that will also be paid out of that fund through LATCF funds and ARPA funds. Um, so those costs are ongoing, we're at about seventeen percent of what we budgeted for that fund. Here are some of the non-major funds, so, um, these are Weed and Pest, Fairfield, Conservation Trust and Public Health. Um. Weed and Pest Fund, I would expect a lot of those expenditures to take. Place in the summer, later in the spring and in the summer and maybe the fall, so we're only at about twelve percent of what was budgeted for that fund. Um, and then we've collected about forty-nine percent of what was budgeted for revenue, and that's again because you collect property tax early in the year, so they've already got a lot of the revenue that they were expecting. Um. Fairfield expenditures, um, are a little bit higher. And I believe that's because some of those, um. Those inter-fund charges have already been collected. Um. Through at least half of the year, so I think that's why that's up a little bit. Um, Conservation Trust Fund, there haven't been any expenditures of that money yet this year, um, so we're at zero percent of expenditures and about. Twenty-five percent of revenues, I believe that revenue is collected quarterly, so probably through June thirtieth, we'll, we'll have about half of that collected. And then public health, um, we're at about fourteen percent of revenue and twenty-two percent of expenditures. Some of that is just because at the end of May, we need to do a request for reimbursement to match some of those expenditures most likely. And we've got internal service funds, that's Fleet and Central Services, um, Central Services. Collects money from the other funds to pay specific bills primarily. Insurance is, is a large one out of that fund and that expense has already been made at the end of, or. Through May thirty-first, that expense has already been made, so they've collected about eighty percent of the revenue and made about seventy-five percent of expected expenditures. Um, and then Fleet. Um, revenue collected is about thirty-seven percent, which is. Again, we'd like to, it, it, we would expect it to be at about forty-two percent, and then expenditures are at twenty-six percent and, um. That's only because a lot of. The expenditures out of that fund are for larger capital items and those just haven't been made yet. So that's what I have for budget. To actual information for each of the funds, I also looked at the cash balances and the funds, they're all very healthy, um. The general fund has about forty-two million dollars in cash or forty-one million dollars in cash at the end of May. Um, and only about two point seven million dollars in liabilities, so fund balance at the end of May, and the general fund is about thirty-eight million dollars. Um, and about twenty million of that is really unassigned and. And hasn't been put towards, towards any project, so about twenty million dollars in the general fund is what's available to the county commissioners. Um, for expenditures in the future. Um. Another eighteen million dollars in that fund, eighteen or nineteen million dollars is assigned. So it's really been assigned most of it, or about seven point five million of it. Just to, as kind of a reserve, that the county commissioners have previously, um, determined that they want to hold in the fund. Um, and then about a million is restricted in that fund or between eight hundred and a million, and that's for various things like Tabor. Um, and grant programs that might be in the general fund. Were there any specific questions that any of you had for me?
Hi. No, you answered a lot of mine, um, during the work session, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Just making sure that I got it wrote, so at the very beginning you just noted we're. Year-to-date overall at twenty-seven point nine percent, did I write that down right?
Or.
Thought it was just kind of overall, but I wasn't sure.
I think that was, that was the general fund, so the general fund expenditures are at about twenty-seven point nine percent of budget so far this year. Um, and some of that is because of just big projects that haven't taken place yet. Um, and some of it is because you also budget a significant amount of contingency funds, so there's. Over a million dollars in budgeted expenditures that are for unforeseen. Emergencies that happen during the year that the county commissioners then can use to, um. Budget to other line items or departments.
Perfect, thank you.
And then if you ever have any other questions or want more detail on any of the items in one of the funds or one of the departments. Um, we can certainly provide that to you as well.
Lisa, as far as one of the things I would like to make sure that we, um. When will this information, when will the actual fund balance and year-to-date? Numbers be uploaded into ClearGov as we start to do that budget process?
So. I'll work with you on that to determine when we can start uploading. Because we want to upload the twenty twenty-four actual information and then probably in July or August, work on doing a forecast so that we can get those twenty twenty-five. Um. Projecting beginning numbers as well, so we'll start projecting. Ending twenty twenty-five numbers probably in August. So that we have beginning fund balance to start working with. For twenty twenty-six. Okay, does that make sense? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome.
All right, um, moving on to line item E.
So. Madam Chair, I would move that we ratify the letter to CPW Commission regarding, regarding the, um, Wolf comments.
Second, yeah.
I have a motion and a second. Uh. Reese, or is Reese on?
I did those.
Oh, you did them, okay.
Yeah, so that was just, um, my comments that I made at the CPW Commission meeting. Last week, I think it was, um. So while Wolves were not on the agenda, which was interesting, um. Because the meeting was in Garfield County and right next to, we're not far from where the Wolf issues are happening right now. Um. But I happened to sign on for another purpose and got a Wolf update from Director Davis, and then I was able to provide those comments, and of course. I, I did have five minutes because I'm a county commissioner, everybody else had two minutes, I think it was. Um. But, um, I, it was interesting, but I think very, um, useful, I think we actually helped to make a difference there. We still have Wolves, but.
They're here. Thank you, and thank you for doing that. Um, will you please call the role, Chrissy?
Overton?
Hi.
Scrutcherfield?
Hi.
O'Hara?
Hi.
Uh, motion passes, moving on to. Um, line item F, so we are going to be discussing. Um, the RBC compensation study proposal, so that would be you, Ms. Laura.
You know, it's never a good thing to follow the budget office. And all the, oh, the dire. Desert and. Yeah, you know, next time, Chrissy, can you put me first? And what I really wanted to say is some money. Um, so, uh. I'm requesting, uh, to conduct a compensation study for the county. Um, part of, next slide, please. Uh, part of the purpose is, um, you know, one is legal compliance, it would, um. Help us under the Colorado Equal Pay for Equal Work Act. Um, to make sure that we are ensuring the equal pay for substantially similar work, um, is being done. Um. It also requires us to have a pay equity analysis, um, which I did in-house. Somewhat after the law came into play, um. Looking at it now, um. I probably didn't do a very good job on that. Um. And part of the, the request or proposal that I sent out included a pay equity analysis for Rio Blanco County. Um, it would, a outside study would help identify and correct any unintentional pay disparities. Um, which mitigates risk of lawsuits. And supports client compliance with, um, a lot of our federal and state laws. Next slide.
Wait, back up one second, I think. Mr. Scrutcherfield.
I did, but I might have forgotten what the question was.
I like it. Sorry, it'll, it'll come back to me and when I do follow.
Sure.
Um, another of the purposes is, uh, to help us with our recruitment and retention challenges. Um, it would help us compete both in public and with public and private sectors, uh, for qualified employees. Uh, we have seen difficulty in attracting and keeping off talent over the last several years. And it would help, uh, ensure pay is competitive, uh. Or if we want to be competitive, you know, that's the decision that we would have to make too, if we want to. Lag the market, meet the market or. Be above the market, which I don't think. As a government entity, we've ever been above the market, but it's always a nice thought. Um, and just help internally support internal equity. Um, and if people are being paid, um, similarly. And hopefully, um, promote employee trust and satisfaction. Um. Also, the way we have done it the last, oh, quite a few years, is we have set a salary for a job. We don't have ranges and we budget for a set salary for a position. Which leaves, um, you know, your salary compression, uh, with long-tenured employees may earn similar than new hires. Supervisors may earn less than their direct reports. Um, and a compensation study would address and issue those in a very systematic way. And it would help us with our informed budget planning. Next slide. Um. It would also modernize our HR and compensation practices, uh. With a compensation philosophy, like if we want to match or lag the market. Uh, provides the foundation for performance-based pay and structure, structured step increases. Um, in positions the county is a modern and competitive employer. We are one of the few entities that actually, the way that we budget a position as opposed to, um. Having, you know, a minimum, mid, and high pay ranges. And we don't do that. Uh, let's see, next slide. So, uh, compensation study, um, is an objective review, it's, um. From an outside entity is what I'm proposing. Um, they would come in and do, look at our job descriptions, they would do, uh, our internal case structures and job classifications, they group. Uh, like duties together, um. Then look at the market for our competitiveness, pay equity. And recommend adjustments for us. Next slide. Uh, so the goals, uh, we kind of touched on earlier, but ensure legal compliance, attract and retain qualified employees, support internal equity. Build transparency and trust with our employees and, uh, help us with our strategic budgeting and workforce planning. Okay, next slide. Um. And went through that. Um, the next one, uh, so historically, our last one was in two thousand and seven. Um, done by Slaven Management Consultants, so it has been a while, the one prior to that was in two thousand and one. Um, by Organizational Development Services, those are the last two I could find. Um, an outside agent, agency provides unbiased third-party validation of our pay structure. Helping avoid internal perception of favoritism or politics. Uh, next slide, the cost, um. So I send out, uh, our, he's on BIDNAP. We got twenty back. Um, they ranged from twenty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty to a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. I had two out of there that topped a hundred thousand, and I'm not sure exactly what they thought I was really asking for. But, uh, I hope they were gonna give it to me in gold. Um, so, um, the, the twenty-four nine thirty to forty-two five hundred were, was, uh, the top six. There was a few kind of. Was uh, the top six. There was a few kind of there in the middle. I threw that forty-two thousand five hundred in. Um. From one of the, the agencies, uh, Garfield County used them. And just had glowing reports on that particular company. And so I threw it in. Um, at the forty-two five for consideration. Um, we do have, uh, hundred thousand budgeted in contingency for, um, personnel. Stuff. So between the two. Um. Compensation studying the human resource system that I'm going to ask for, um, would fall within that hundred thousand. Um. So hopefully. Uh, having a, an outside compensation study, uh, would help us with our turnover reduction. Um, and mitigate some of the risk. When employees leave, I send out an exit survey, um. And talk to employees, um. They still mention, um, wages. As a, one of the, the factors on why they're leaving.
So just real quickly, so do they just say that, you know, due to low wages or can they confirm that they're actually going to a higher payer job?
They say that they're going to a higher paid job.
Does that ever include insurance benefits as well?
Um. I don't know that they always calculate all of that out. Uh, you know, our, our insurance, our benefits. Overall, our benefits, you know, between the retirement and the accruals and stuff, um. I rarely have any, um, negative on those.
If I might mention, so I, Laura wasn't sure that we had budgeted for that. And I do recall in a, a conversation that. The Commissioner's direction at that time was to, we could include it as a contingent item. Upon getting the RFP submitted, uh, figuring out so for this and the, the other ones she's going to be asking about. So in Laura's contingency fund, those funds were set aside for those types of systems or. You know, but the Commissioners at the time didn't want to designate, yes, we want a compensation study or not. So. But the funds were set aside, they have been budgeted for.
How many people are left because of wages? One, ten, fifteen?
Not fifteen, but probably. This is just a guess without pulling everything up, um, probably. Ten in the last. Eight months.
Less than ten percent.
These are a number of employees that we currently have.
Well, right now we have a hundred and forty-five.
As of today.
Next week, so a hundred and forty-six.
Do we have any employee that is making more than their supervisor?
Uh, Vicky makes more than you.
Other than that.
We can, we'll just have to fix.
Just a minute, let me think.
Because that's one of the reasons you want to do this study now. It's because we've got employees making more than.
That they could make more.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
But they could.
Why, why could they make more?
As if a, a position is potentially, because we came very close with like. Between landfill and the Public Works Director, if you hire somebody that is. Um. That doesn't have as much experience, we've lowered the wage. If we had somebody like Corey that was still there, it would have, it would have put him making more than the Public Works Director. Potentially.
I guess from my standpoint, um, when you look at the history of the last time that we did this kind of study. Um, and looked at, um, employees as a whole and what those job duties are and we do wear. Most, everybody probably wears multiple hats. Um, that the internal studies we have really. Don't point a finger to say, where are we in the total scheme of things? So we're assumed, we make a lot of assumptions. Um, by going through this independent study, again, I could do a study and say, oh, I called all the other. Counties around and I took all the high figures where another department might have called around. And got local businesses that got, you know, lower figures. So by doing this, it is that independent that says, nope, this is what. This is truly what you have. And again, that is a historical, when you look back at those previous years. Um, studies, you know, and again, what the Commissioners at that point were looking at. You know, I don't know, because that was before my time, um. But there was some case that they made to, to do those studies.
Two thousand seven, was it before your time?
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Thousand one, two thousand seven.
Well, the comment that you just made that, that our employees generally. Uh, because we're small and our departments are not as big, we generally have them doing a lot of different things. So their job duties are not going to be. Uh, in alignment with this job duties of this study.
Well, they would look at each of the job descriptions and they would. Group them into like duties and our job descriptions. Um, which we updated, uh.
Two years ago?
Yeah, um. Do state all our different hats for the most part, minus Chrissy's. We're updating hers right now, but, um. And they will, so they will look at, at our information and group our employees based off of like duties to make sure that we're paying. Them internally. Um. Similar.
And then so to Doug's comment, because we are doing such a diverse, like one person does three different job duties that are very diverse. You may not have that in another county. How will they justify that?
They should be able to take, take a chunk of this one and a chunk of this one. I mean, that's what I've done in the past, is somebody who's had. Two different, um, roles. I'd went in and, and said, you know, how much time do you spend on each? Say it's fifty fifty. And then I take the wage of this fifty and this fifty and average it. To get our salary. That's how we've done it in the. And I can't see that they do it any different. Then they'll benchmark them. Once we're grouped, we'll be, they call them benchmarking positions. And that's what you go in and look at in the future is, is for that whole group. As a benchmark.
Right.
Cause they, cause normally you don't go in and look at every single position individually. You usually just go in and look at benchmarks.
And are they going to be looking at them individually? Themselves and, and a follow-up question to that is. Is it going to require staff to then, because they're the ones that are wearing multiple hats? To report their time, how much like, is this company going to come in and say, okay? This person has three different jobs. What is the percentage of each of those and that they're, they're going to ask? Staff to start tracking that if they're not.
I don't believe so. I think they'll come in, look at our job descriptions, group them. And then I. I think that they will benchmark the group. I think that they will. I would, I'd have to double check that, Jennifer.
Okay, I missed, sorry. I had too many things going on in my head. When you say the benchmarking the group, so. Managers at this level, is that the group we're talking about?
If they, if they have. Uh, like duties, like responsibility. Um. That's how they'll group them.
Okay, Laura, could you do like a, an example? Um. Um, I don't know, think of an example that would. Maybe a, um.
Is, well, um, so is a motor vehicle. Um. Work, uh, in a similar job duty as our, as administrative assistant or, uh. Or an eligibility tech mission. Um, do they have similar responsibilities? Like duties. Those kind of things that they look at.
So when we had originally one time talked about, you know, the difference between someone who handles cash and someone who doesn't handle cash. Whether that be in your department, finance department, treasurer's office. Whatever, is that what you're looking at? You know, as being part of that foundation of the benchmark? I mean, th- this person has to do these things. You have to be. At this level in order to reconcile and handle cash or, I mean, how does that look?
I'm not quite sure I understand. They would look at like cash handling. Um. And if you have, the more autonomy you have with cash, then you're usually paid a little bit more with the hopes that. You're not going to. Over it.
So then. That would be, for instance, that could be considered one of the classifications of a particular.
It would be one duty. It would not be a, a group itself normally.
It'd be a duty.
That I've seen in the past.
Laura, using your numbers, the twenty-four, nine thirty and the forty-two five, that is anywhere from a hundred and sixty-six to two hundred and eighty-three dollars a person. Seems a little high to me just to go in there and tell. I mean. Are they?
It's a lot of work, Doug.
Well, and this also, those numbers also include. Looking at our benefits. Comparing our benefits with other benefits or other companies and counties. Um, and it also includes the pay equity analysis.
Hmm.
So some of those are broken out into like the twenty-four, nine thirty. The compensation and the benefit study. Um, is like twenty-one thousand nine thirty. The pay equity is another three thousand. On top of that, to get the twenty-four nine thirty.
While Doug is thinking on that. I guess, I mean, I see a lot of value in doing this, don't get me wrong. Um, two things, I think financially and then again, timing. Um, financially. Again, not, I, I get that we potentially budgeted for it. But we're working on, we're going to be implementing the AP, an AP system. I should have not done this one, Vicky, that. A voucher system, a GOV OS system and a payroll system. So there's a lot right now that we're doing. Um, and I think all of the, those kind of fit together. I think we need to do them all. Um. I just questioned, it just feels like we're trying to fix everything right now. And it's like, I'm not sure our budget can handle that. Um. So, question is, does it make sense to hold this off, get all of these things in place and get them fixed? I mean, get, get them all smoothed out, everybody doing what they should be doing because this could change job descriptions. Right? With all of the, the different things that we're doing with the technology. Um, and I, I say job descriptions because people are going to be doing a little bit different. The second thing that comes to my mind is in the leadership class that we had. The gentleman, we, one of those classes talked about the different. We, you know, market is one of three things you need to look at when you're looking at salaries. Don't. I remember him cautioning, cautioning us not to chase the market. Cause you're always going to be chasing the market.
Sure.
You gotta do this. There's, there's, I can't remember the other two. I was just looking to see if I could find a, um. So yeah, I think we need to know that market. I'm just not sure that we need to know it right now. This would be my thoughts.
I agree with that thought because this, uh. The reason that you're doing this is to increase wages. Is that correct?
Tell us where we are for sure with the wages. It would also give us a. Pay range, grade steps and how to move up those steps. Um, it would let employees know. You know, goals on how to, to reach the next level. Um, with their wage and a new step in their, their compensation.
We, we have. An insurmountable problem coming in this budget year because our. Our, uh. Insurance just went up twenty-two percent. And we're starting to add more and more onto this. And I, I don't know where we're going to come up with the money. Um.
It gives us our, a foundation. That doesn't mean that if the money's not there, we don't.
But is it wise to spend the money on something like this right now? When we know we don't have the money?
I know. I asked last year and the year before, so if I don't ask, I won't get it. Last year it was fifteen thousand dollars. Well, and I think now it's twenty-four nine thirty. From the same entity.
And I think it's one of those things that as, from an overall perspective. The, the biggest cost that the, the board that as Commissioners you have to manage, of course, is personnel expenses. It is one of the most significant. Pieces. Um, in looking at this, I think the, from, from my standpoint, it makes sense to do it now. Um, it, the funds have been set aside. They were targeted for that. Not that you couldn't decide to use those funds elsewhere. But it gives us a good basis going into. The budget season and going in following that because another thing that this could possibly be used for is as. Natural attrition occurs, are those positions ones that get filled? Are there, you know, the job duties, you've identified what those particular job duties are? You know, is there a way to, you know, move those things around? So. By not, I guess by not doing the study, have you gained anything?
You gained some money that, that, uh, we're going to have to use for this twenty-two percent.
And on that, I do have, um. Our statistics out to companies to, uh, to bid and our, and, uh, the Willis. Willis Thompson Watson, Willis, is that what it is? That's wrong. Um. He's also, uh, sending our stuff out for, for companies to look at. But he cautions us that our statistics, um, and large claims are pretty bad that. He said, don't, don't get too excited on having it lower. But we are. Right, we're still going to be. A little bit of trouble there with our insurance and with cost.
Yeah, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off there. It's my brain, my brain was going, um. So. I, and, and I, I certainly won't disagree that we may be behind. Neighboring counties in salaries. Um, but. Again. Water study or anything else, we think something, but we don't know it for sure. So we might find that we're not as far behind in salaries, especially when you compare benefits. As everybody thinks we are. So there's value, I mean, there's value in always ha- in having facts. There's never. Or a reason not to have the facts. I'm just thinking because we have all this other happening and Vicky, what I mentioned while you were out was. We've got those four programs, technology that we're trying to implement right now and those all need to kind of happen together. It's locked. It, it feels like a lot to me, let me put it that way. Maybe it's because I'm newcomer, um. But. If we had, if it. I guess I'm just thinking those to me are a priority and then this. Because of the three things that we need to consider in the, um, stat, in the salary piece, like you and I talked the other day. Um, can this wait? And I hate to say another year. And I hate to say another year. Cause I know, you were hoping this was the third time was a charm. I know you were.
Well, in part of this, it, it kind of plays also into my next presentation with the human resources system. Um. Which I'm, uh. Kind of jumping ahead a little bit though, but on the, the one that we are all kind of recommending for a human resources system. One of the, um. Sections of that is a, is about compensation and benchmarking and. You know, they help us, uh, help us with that, but we, we usually feed the data in first. They don't build it for us like they would, um.
Like they would, like this company would, oh, okay, me and this, okay. Me and this company, that company.
One of the companies.
Okay.
Um, they would just play nicely together. It would, it would pull into if we, if approved, that the human resource. System is approved. It, um. It, it's, it's a section of that that it keeps us up on, you know. Um, whatever policies we would put in place for moving steps, et cetera. And they also allow us to go out, it's a Mercer. Um. And benchmark jobs as well.
So could the HR system then? Help, kind of help us with the step then towards being, towards benchmarking without this company? Is that what I understood?
Well, it'll, it'll, we'd have to choose our benchmarks, so. Or we wouldn't have necessarily have our groupings. What you're doing is, I've been doing it for years. But I've been doing it for so many years. Do I have built-in biases that I, I don't mean to have, but I could have? Um, you know, do I have people, you know, placed correctly? Um, I have been doing it all individually, um, with all of our jobs for so many years. And so I don't have them grouped and I'm not sure like how to, to group them correctly. That would. Meet the laws.
Is that the equal pay for equal work that you're referring to, to meet the law?
It is. Yeah, we still have to. Take people, you know, correctly with the, our labor standard section, those kind of things. Um, so it's, the full compensation study is probably a little bit more than, than I know how to do. With the, the groupings, um. Can I borrow somebody's? Uh. Compensation tables and. We just move the dollar figures down a little bit and go off of theirs. We don't know that they definitely match our job descriptions.
We had an issue one time when we looking at the title. And it was the basic county position and looking at it, it wasn't comparable at all. The title was the same that we got that he's wearing.
Cause we don't necessarily have their job descriptions to match. Cause when you go off titles. We, uh. We creatively titled people sometimes. That don't necessarily match the industry title.
Yeah. Well, I, I appreciate all the work that you've done and I, I certainly am listening. I hope you don't want us to make a decision right now.
You know, if it's, cause it's sounding real negative, so don't make it right now.
I don't mean for it to sound negative. I, I just like, I like to take on all of the data so that I can. Um, one last question is who are you comparing us against? Is it an industry? Is it other counties? Is it all of the people on the western slope? Who are you?
We would, we would help make that decision. They would give us, um. Depending on like which company, um. Would say, uh, where we choose nine specific, say, it, counties. For example, that we want to, um, compare to. Um, and then they will also go out to their, uh. Their other companies and industries that they have and, and compare those as well. And then they would put in our specific, say, we want Moffett County, Route County, Delta, Monroe's, you know. We would have those options of, of stating that. And then some private industry.
Yeah.
Cause I, I did put that in the RFP because you've mentioned it in the past. What is interesting in, um. Three that I can think of, um, companies where they were gonna get some of their data to compare us to. Was employers council, which is the twenty-four, nine thirty.
And that's pretty funny.
They were gonna use part of theirs. The, the data that we already. Get employers council. I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, and yet wanna charge more than they do. As it's not.
It's been an interesting process.
Yeah, I bet.
It really has.
Is this the first time you've gone to an RFP on it?
Yeah, I've never done an RFP before.
To try and get quotes on it.
Yeah.
It is, I'm just thinking outside the box, would it, uh. Be hopeless to keep a database without names. Of what people are making and the job they left to go to. That could be the same kind of study you're talking about. Different way to get there.
We could, if, if we know, sometimes they just. They won't show me what, they don't tell me what they're.
Well, you, yeah, gotta be careful.
And.
Well, supposedly with the equal pay for equal work, everybody's supposed to be posting their wages in the job notice.
But oftentimes they're quite a range.
Yes.
And.
And a lot of. Companies still are not doing so.
Right. And I guess. I'm, I'm thinking of just experience in the past. You know, while pay is definitely sometimes a significant piece. Usually there's more than one reason you leave a job.
Oh, yeah.
And so I guess I would think we wanna be careful based in our. Info on. People leaving versus people staying. Too. I mean, there's probably a little bit of both of that. Um. So I guess I'm with Doug. I just need, I mean, I really appreciate all the information. There's a, there's a lot and I. And I see real value in it. I'm just trying to figure out right now if, if. We can do it with all the other stuff we're doing. I like, I like real data.
And I, and I, I agree with Doug. I think. And it's unfortunate we heard all the budget stuff and, um, but it's not anything that I haven't said that I didn't say last budget season. And that's revenues are down and expenditures are up and we're seeing that trend and. Right now, the way I'm looking at budget is every dollar is going to count and especially when. They're now predicting next year insurance to go up another twenty-five percent next year. So. That is, that is going to be the trend for a while and I just, that's, but I do appreciate you looking into it and. And, you know, giving us the data, but I'm just, I'm not there. I wanna, I, I need more time to process and look at. Some other data.
And so one thing, can I pull one other thing out? Even, cause.
You got one more rabbit?
I, I wanna say. But. Um, so even if we don't go with the full compensation study. What about doing the pay equity analysis that is required under law? For approximately three thousand dollars.
And so, so what you're saying is that we're out of compliance with that right now?
That would show that we are or not. We, we.
How does the law read on that?
Well, we're, we're, we're supposed to do a study every two years biannually on, on.
Which we have on some level because you have done, I mean, CTSI. And, and we pull some of our data from CTSI, which they do their own. So it's not biased on some level because. You're pulling it from CTSI and pulling it over. So, yeah, so. I mean, we are, we have been doing it. Done it actually every year, I think, since I've started anyway.
But the, the pay equity analysis actually is, um, where I take. Uh, all the jobs, I take our names away, but you know, uh, this, all the females and males. And I, and then you take the groupings and, um, for the jobs and are you paying the females? Um, like the males, if there's a discrepancy, why is there a discrepancy? And then we have to explain. Why there's a discrepancy on, on our pay if there, if there is. And does it meet any of the, the legally acceptable reasons of why we're paying differently?
Also, just because doesn't count as one of those reasons?
No, they don't. I don't care for that one.
No, that, that one's probably not gonna be.
But it could be like geographical, uh, more experience, um, you know, education.
They have the education.
Yeah, those, those type of things that if we can explain why.
So.
It, it's all in preparation to go to court.
Right, but what were you after today? Were you looking for a yes, no?
I was hoping for one.
I'm gonna have sleep on some.
That's great.
May I ask one more question? Um, on a cost benefit analysis, how long does it take you to pull those figures together? We're, we're looking at, you know, we've done contracts for other things to say, you know. Is it cheaper for us to do this ourselves or is it cheaper to outsource that? Just for that one piece. How long would it take you? How long does it typically take you to do that? And how long would it take? Bob's. Accounting to do that? I mean, what, what does that, that look like?
Um. To pull the, the salary data, um. That I have done. It, it takes weeks, but I'm also doing some of my other duties with that. Um. Cause with employers council, I used to have where I matched and then from year to year I could, I would match that same. Job description where they give a. Last year they changed to, is it Chrissy? What is it? Pay loss? Pay factor. Pay, pay life, pay factor. So employers council messed up all my data from the way I was usually pulling it. Uh, because they used to have, I did, or public sector, your benchmarking, which was like, and then IT. Were three separate surveys that I used that I could match. Most of our jobs with.
And then the second part of that question is, how long would it take you to do, you know, you're saying weeks, how long would it take them to do it? And then if it was the whole combined, the whole tamale. What would be the timeframe that if they went to do this, how long would that take?
It would still be probably late August or so before they would. Have our data back to us. Cause they would come in and they would look at all our job descriptions and stuff. That I don't have to necessarily do anymore. I'm familiar with them.
Just want to put a timeline.
And then, and then if the commissioners say, you know, well. Also go out and include, you know. Jackson County or, or somewhere else, then we've gotta call and try to get all their data and then. Match their job descriptions with our job descriptions. Um.
I just wanted to give the commissioners a timeframe that that might take for either.
Okay, so just so that I get my head around it one last time or just in a simple format. So the three thousand dollar piece. Is just internally comparing everybody to everybody, our internal part. This is going outside and looking at everybody.
Yes.
And comparing to us. Okay.
Yes. So, yeah, just a consideration as well.
So help me with this study.
Uh, the full one or the?
You know, we, we're kind of. Somewhat different in Real Blanco County because we. You, Garfield County is, 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 uh, got a lot of high wages and a lot of different aspects.
Hmm.
Um. They've got ten times our budget. Um. The, if you do this study, is it? I can see the benefits of doing surrounding counties because that's where people might go. Although I think that we've got a, a huge advantage in Real Blanco County because that's where we live and that's, that has to be a. Anyway, um, if you. Would it be beneficial to take other counties that have sixty-five hundred people and, and their budget's the same? Can we? Can you do stuff like that? Is that comparable? Because it's not around here. I, I don't know.
And Doug, it's, it's very subjective because. You would each have your own opinion on whether you value that data or not. It's just trying to, you know, for me, get direction on. What data do you want me to use to do the comparison with?
And I think that's really critical.
Yeah, and if it changes year to year, that makes a big. Difference.
And, and the reason I have to say that, I think if I'm not mistaken, I've been told that Garfield is dipping into reserves right now. And they. I mean, even as much money as they've got. I think I was told and I'm trying to think where it was from. And so, you know, that's the other thing. Those that are paying higher wages, are they dipping in deserves to do that? And how, how long is that gonna last? You know, so.
I think that that's key is, is the, and again, there would be some value in working with the company. If and when you select them to say, okay, what, in your opinion, what makes sense? I mean, they've had experience with this and then. Our experience or our thoughts and ideas and, and fleshing those out.
Well, and of course, if you're the employee, the goal is hopefully it'll say we need higher wages.
Right.
But internally, it doesn't have to be looked at as, as, we're trying to get higher wages. It's where are we?
Where are we?
Just so again, hard data, what are, where are we? And here is, here's your groupings, here is your, your, your grades and here's your. Say, for example, nine steps with percentage, um, increases between the steps. And here's the plan on how your employee. You know, a brand new employee coming in with no experience, maybe fresh out of high school, for example. Um, it's gonna be a step one, but maybe, um, you know, another employee that's hired in. It'll like position that has four years of experience out in the workforce and similar experience. Maybe they all started a, a step three.
Hmm.
Um, and if they get this education, then that would help them go to a step four or step five.
And so basically it's setting up our system, our policy system.
Hmm.
And, and I, I see a lot of value in that, but I just am thinking, yeah.
Yeah, I do too, but I, I, you know, it, it, there's a couple of ways to look at that. If you're looking at it, at. Somebody that looks at things socially, you know, and everybody. We need to pay the same thing as this key resorts and, and. Stuff like that. And then, and then the other way to look at it is we, we, we have to maintain. The financial stability of the county and, and looking down the future and. And if we're not losing a whole bunch of people, we're not doing too bad. We're losing half our people every year, then we've gotta do something wrong, different, you know? I don't know.
And, and I, I'm pretty confident that these kind of companies will make, I mean. They will look at the cost of living within any county that they're looking at. So like you say, so maybe the county is similar to our size. They have a very different economy and different style, not style of living, cost of living, probably style of living too. Um. They'll take that into consider. That's gonna be in that, there's probably some kind of a scoring system that all that stuff falls into. I mean. Those guys, people that do that for a living, I mean, there's a, there's a lot goes into that. And then of course we have to factor in, you know, we compare their information. To the information that we know and have to decide on. And again, I don't ever wanna be just chasing the market. It's gonna be those three factors, even though I can't remember the other two.
I went, I can't remember it, but I know there's two.
No, that's a really good point. In this, in this study, do they take cost of living into?
Oh, yeah.
I would imagine they would, but.
You know, all we ever see is their wages. They don't say, they say. You know, all we ever see is their wages. They don't see, they say, um, while the people in Garfield County are making ten dollars an hour more, now it costs them fifteen dollars an hour more to live there.
And I think that's a good question, Doug. I think we insist that whatever company we're dealing with does, and that may be your, your discrepancy in your, the cost there is that very, that kind of thing.
It could.
I think that's a very valuable.
I don't recall anything, you know, in their the proposals that mentioned it.
I'd have to do that more recall.
Yeah, I, I'd really dig into that because that's gonna be critical. Absolutely. We don't, well, there's some things that we may, may kinda look like. Hesitate to say this, kinda like Routh County. But, but there may be, um, that they, we have to take into the cost of living.
Well, it's that too, that piece of, you know, we have had significant insurance on our medical. You know, we know that that's if we keep the plan, which I hope that we do, the plan's the way that we've got that. That's a huge benefit to cover, you know, but what does that relate to? So Laura in January sent out the statement, you know, of that's what this really is worth, you know, versus, oh, I can go make ten dollars more an hour and, in Bubba County, but I'm gonna pay three times as much because now my family's not covered or, you know, I mean, so those are the considerations that I think that might help.
And some of that too is, is truly, um, not only age, but family demographics, you know, your, um, your single employees that they can go and, and chase the market versus those that, that may not be able to.
So here I found my notes.
Okay.
So just to remind us, it's market, performance, and skill-based. Those are the three that you need to blend on. Um, and the other thing that I recall him saying that was really kind of, I mean, we all know it, but it just didn't hurt to say it, now if I can find it. We, the, the employers can't influence or control the style of living, I think is how he put it. I don't know if you can remember that.
I do remember.
That style of living, how you spend your money is not our challenge. How you save your money is not our challenge. And I think that that goes, um, can't find it. But anyway, I, I guess Laura, I would be really interested in, in you digging into these companies. Do they consider that cost of living? Um, how do they factor in the benefits? How do, you know, what value do they put on that? Because the other thing that people don't think about is when you're getting, let's just say for a minute, you're getting two thousand dollars in health insurance benefit. That's two thousand dollars you are not paying taxes on. So that's another whatever percent you've been paying taxes, you, that's another benefit that you're getting because you don't pay benefit on that. So I would like to see that they take all of that stuff into consideration and I'll think about other thoughts and everybody else.
Because the cost of living is, is definitely questionable. Part of the R S P was that they look at our comfort or our, our benefits based on the other, other uh, entities, benefit packages as well.
Okay. So anyway, those are things that I would be very interested in and as long, you know, see what we're really gonna get out of it. Cause, cause I and then that way we would have facts, and we could work with facts. I like facts.
Wanted to go to your next one because you're next on the list.
Are you guys ready for the next one?
I think we'd be.
Roll with it.
I know.
Roll with it. Oh my goodness. All right.
We don't need emotion. We're just moving into the next one, right?
Discussion on the new H R system.
Yes.
Yes.
So we've spent the last few months doing demos for a, an H R system. Um. What we currently have, um, uh, let's see, next, yeah, there we go. Uh, so why, uh, with the rapid changes in the workforce, compliance, documentation, um, employee expectations? Um, currently our H R processes are very, very manual, um, fragmented, time-consuming. Uh, we get a new hire. I enter them into a, an access database right now, um, which is a system that that I built that works for me and what I needed to do. Um, then I, we have to uh, enter them into the payroll system. We enter them into Monday for facilities and I T. Um, they're entered into a spreadsheet, um, kind of an issue spreadsheet for payroll, um, which is separate than the payroll system. So it's, it's a lot of manual steps that are time-consuming and they are not efficient at all. Um. So I'm trying to automate tasks, um, while of course in, continuing to ensure our compliance. Um, and it will improve our cybersecurity for our, all our sensitive employee data. So. What's the H?
Sorry, back up again. What's that? H?
R I S. Human Resource Information System.
Thank you.
But it's easier almost to say human resources. Yeah. Um, so our current challenges, um, like our employee records, uh, they're still partly paper-based, um, hard to retrieve and maintain. Uh, Chrissy's working diligently, trying to get everything scanned in. So we've got a little bit of mix of both. Um, so that's a, a waste of time and data risk for us. Um, benefits tracking, we still do manual enrollment and updates. Leave attendance, uh, manual requests, uh, some manual entries. That's not only on the H R side, that's like on a supervisor's um, site as well. Uh, the onboarding is uh, still very manual process. Uh, reporting, we still do a lot of manual compilation, uh, a little bit out of the payroll system, out of encode, a little bit out of my H R system. Drop it into an Excel spreadsheet to try to make it work. Um. And then, so at the bottom with the payroll, uh, so the A, Human Resource System can, um, ha, that has a module that you can do payroll, time reporting and payroll. Um, so I'm gonna kind of talk as if we were doing the payroll module as well. That is, is strictly optional. Um, but the manual process like for payroll, uh, finance estimated that they do about thirty hours per pay period, which cost about eight hundred and thirteen dollars for them for payroll. Um, ten hours for me per payroll, clerk and recorder, about thirty minutes for payroll, treasures, two hours, public works, about eleven and a half by the time they pull their information out of Pub Works and put into encode. Um, and then go through the, the separate, uh, uh, approvals with their departments, uh. And then so about annual, about forty-four thousand uh, dollars spent just on payroll.
And that's currently, this is what it's costing each department to do this.
That's what we have to do.
Does that include how much time it takes for each employee to?
No, it, this is just strictly running the payroll process.
Cause I assume there would be a big benefit to that too.
Yes.
Yeah, and also the supervisors local or the department has to then include that.
Okay, yes. So I didn't pull all of those. This was just kind of in the payroll process of getting it manually. Mm-hmm. Um, so benefits, uh, it would save H R staff between Chrissy and I, thirty to forty percent of our time is spent on manual admin tasks. Um, it would, this system would also assist the finance department and supervisors. Um, reduces redundancy and improves accuracy because by the time you enter the same information into about five systems, the likelihood of making an error is exponential on that. Um, transparency, it would allow all our employees to access their own H R information such as their pay stubs, uh, P T O balances, uh, whether it's on a, a mobile app that they wanna use their phone, uh, their computers, uh, we could have a time clock, um. Like if Rome Bridge wanted to instigate a time clock or they come in and just uh, badge you into a time clock or use a tablet, um, they offer a multitude of, of options there, um, where, cause now we go into encode, enter our time. Um, eight hours and six minutes. Where this would, you clock in, you clock out, whether it's on your computer, your phone or your whatever. They calculate it for you. You're not trying to go, well, let's see.
It'll be around to six minutes.
Six minutes. That we do, um. Uh, transparency, also all our policies, and I'll go into it a little bit further down below too, but our policies would be there. They could go, an employee could go in and say, um, what can I use sickly for? And it'll pull up off of our policies, everything that they could use.
It actually, it actually uses an A I to go in and so if, if they had a specific question like, um, can I use sickly for X Y Z situation? It would actually read the, it would go in, read the policy and instead have an answer based on that. They could pull from multiple policies to build a single answer.
Um, so any of the systems that we looked at, um, and we call it integrate with in code, um, it's, they produce a report uh, with a bunch of C V S, C S V, C S V or H T M L, any of those, and then upload into the system if we go with the payroll system. Excuse me. Um, scalability, um, is support flexibility with our staff size. If we were to increase staff or decrease staff, and then of course the data security. Which Trevor really likes that part, so.
Scalability is that price scalability?
With, with our recommended, recommendation later on, it, it does. Okay. Ponds, of course, there's cost to any program or any software that we get. Um, you know, we're gonna have to learn a new system and it would be not only H R, it would be depending on the modules that we get. Um, I like all of the modules, um, so I'm advocating for that, but, um, for employees to learn how to, to clock in and clock out or put their time in, um, look up their payroll stubs. Uh, you know, get their W twos, all of the things that they call us for, either myself or budget to get now. They would go in and get.
They do offer training for new employees. So if a new manager comes in, they would get new manager training, stuff like that.
Yeah. Um, of course, it is, it would be a change, um, so there's always some resistance to change. Um, and do it differently. Uh, dependence on technology, because sometimes technology goes down and we wouldn't have our nice piece of paper. And then if, assuming that we would use a payroll, uh, portion of it, we'd have to upload that stuff into in code. So some of the features, um, and this was with any of the systems. So this is kind of why it's general and then we'll go down to our recommendation. Uh, recruiting, uh, it builds our job listings in a, a user-friendly way. Uh, we, it posts on job boards automatically, um, the one that we kind of prefer. Uh, uh, Indeed, Glass Door, LinkedIn.
Which, which otherwise cost.
Yeah, as I was gonna say, it doesn't cost you to do it.
No, so it's part of this program. There. Um, it keeps track of their applicant status in the hiring phases. Uh, applicants could go in and look at where we are in the, the phase, uh, hiring process. Uh, we can send automatic updates to applicants saying, you know, we're moving on to interviews. It can also say, no, thank you, you've chosen for an interview, uh, we're in consideration. Uh, and then if we were to hire somebody, it'd transfer all that information into the employee file.
Real quick, it also holds applications, previous applications. So if we open up a new position and there was a an application for a previous position that might fit that, it might pull that application in and suggest that person.
Um, onboarding, uh, it helps us with our offer letters, uh, we can send out all of our forms, uh, our new hire forms out to employees, um, where they could fill them out and have them ready by the first day of work. Uh, checklist for all of us to do. It would send automatic updates, you know, um, Becky, uh, remember you've still gotta get your I nine signed, you've gotta get your benefit statement into H R. You know, sends them periodic reminders, um, to get that done. Uh, Hey, next slide. Uh, then the H R, um, any approvals, updates, changes are all automatic in this system. Uh, where we wouldn't have to have the duplicate data entry. What this would also allow is possibly, um, Trevor mentioned that we could reduce some of the other software that we are currently using. Uh, either get rid of it or reduce the number of licenses, which would also save us money. Um, does training management, uh, like, uh, if we wanted all of our new hires to watch the sexual harassment training, it would make sure that they watched it and then it would log it and keep track that they have taken it. Uh, it would also keep track of like deadlines, like if a certification is coming due. Um, our C D L drivers, uh, their driver's license when it renews, when their medical card renew, all of those kinds of things. Yep. Um, we could push out training individually to employees, whether a department or all employees. And it would uh, check that they had watched it and, and.
Do they have the content already prepared or are we creating the content to push out?
Both, both.
Um, so in, just let me answer back on that. So we did last year was our big employee meeting, wasn't it last year or was it the year before? It was a blur. Um, yeah, it'd been a blur. So I mean, I guess what I'm thinking is some of those core things. In my previous work experience, we had to do four major trainings, a sexual harassment, workplace violence. Two more and now I'm drawing a blank on it. Every year, it, even if you've done it well, you had to do it every year. And then at the end of that training, it made you put in, my name is Vicky Edwards and I have done this training. I understand all the concepts or I contacted H R and then when I hit submit, it's got the current date for that year. Um, so that if there was a change, for instance, or whatever could possibly be.
Our state doing something.
Exactly. Um, then you would have the most current version
Right.
of that saying, wait a minute, you did go through this training. You said you did this training. So are you lying then or are you lying now?
Yes, you have a training. Why did you do that?
Exactly. Well, that's the next con part of the conversation, but that would all be documented in this.
And even like Rome Bridge with their eight-hour annual refresher for M Shaw, we'd just scan those in and, and they would automatically show that everybody could um, receive those. Uh, benefits administration, uh, would all be in one place instead of doing it in, in multiple places as we do now. Uh, we could push out benefit information, any changes, any updates in, uh, uh, medical dental vision insurance, uh, reminders, et cetera. Uh, and it, they will sync with, uh, most of the carriers for, for timely changes and stuff in there. Uh, compensation, it allows, uh, cumbersome spreadsheets and manual processes. Uh, it does in, uh, built-in, uh, compensation studies, which is the benchmarking that some of the, they use Mercer, the preferred one that we are gonna recommend, using Mercer, which is different than we've ever used before. But it's an option as well. Okay, next one. Um, learning, uh, so it tracks training. I got ahead of myself. I get to talk in and you don't follow my slides. Um, also then, uh, performance, uh, if. Uh it provides uh ongoing feedback and career development opportunities that the supervisors can uh. Help direct their employees. Uh improve efficiency. Right now, we're doing paper based and manual performance appraisals. Uh helps with succession planning. And so provides analytics uh. Set team goals and individual goals for for employees. And in the past, we have. Discussed, well, why don't we look at software for performance management? Why don't we look at software for training? Why do? You know, and all of those were like. Fifteen thousand, twelve to fifteen thousand or something. They're all incorporated in this. Um and then, of course, all the policies, whether it's our cash handling policy, our human resources policies. Are uh what did we just do? Our. Uh what did you guys do this morning?
Oh, the uh.
Paul, the comment. Uh all of those policies could be in here, it could be um with AI, just. Ask a question and and it will go to. Then if we were to do like the payroll side, the time and attendance. Instant access into into that um. It can break time into projects. Uh we discussed kind of uh. Particularly like why time for human reso- for human services, if it could be uh. Take the place of why time and and. They call it projects, but you could clock in and clock out of those individual projects, which would be tied to an account in the finance. Program in in code. If we if we chose to do so. Overtime requests or anything, uh it just shoots straight to the supervisor. Sean would go in and say, yes, no, and why? If no, um. It would all be done in the system. Uh if somebody wanted to request a vacation off. They have their accruals right there listed, and if they try to put in a forty hour vacation and they only have. Twenty four vacation accruals, it'll come up with an error that says. You know, better talk to a supervisor, basically, because this isn't gonna work. And real time reporting anywhere, any, if you were to allow employees to do it off their phones. Um it clicks and tells it where they are. Are they really at the office or are they, you know, down at the bar? Walking, you know.
One of those key things in there is the, it does give the supervisor or the department head. Or the elected official, the ability to have a, an actual time clock.
Sure.
A a punch, the actual kind of, you know. Badge in electronic versus, you know, is that something that would be easier on a phone? Because I'm, I work remote and it, you know, I need to, I can't be there to to do that.
And it can change. So it can be, maybe you want to do it on your phone, maybe Sean wants me to do it on the the computer. And maybe Roden Bridge wants a time clock. We don't have to have one solution for for the entire campaign. We could have it individually.
Roden Bridge uses Pubworks right now because they have what they. They call it their cost centers that they need to, they may change, have clock in on three different cost centers all day long.
Or or you don't, because they still have to get the data out of public works to put it into.
That's what I'm asking is is if. Is that one of the software reductions that you could? Save money on? Is that something you can get rid of, that part of it?
You can clock into different projects. So any of the cost centers, you could consider a project. In this, in this system. So, yeah, you could.
This is my thinking is that when they're doing a certain. But I think the way they clock in and out of those projects would be like. County Road seventy seven, or I'm plowing, or I'm snow plowing here, there, wherever, then that allocates it. And I don't know that this would do it.
Yeah, and this would be. They worked ten hours and ten minutes. If they wanted, you know, they want their stuff with Pubworks. But they wouldn't have to go in, pull it out of. Pubworks and enter it into the system, the employee does that.
Pubworks helps them with their budget.
Right.
Budget stuff.
So I could see that they would run them concurrently. It's just the employee would clock in in the morning. Clock out at lunch. Clock back in.
You're asking if that would be a software savings. It it could potentially be. We'd need to look into that, but they could. This this operator has the ability to do what they need to do and pull the report that they need for budget.
Yeah, because what you're talking is there, you're gonna put more on it. Because they're gonna have to double clock now.
Uh the employee versus having Sean have to pull all that and enter it in.
So you're saying the employee would have to go.
Well, or if they just badge in, walk through the door and go, think.
It's true. They could do that at the courthouse. They they all have badges and they badge in every morning when they walk past that door.
Yeah, it's up to the department head how they want to. Do that.
This connection unit, by the way, it just does have an API that can be integrated with security systems too, but that's beside conversation. But that ain't true, is it?
So then while they're at work and they're going to County Road and they're getting so much gravel out of here and so much, that would still. Probably stay the same in Pubworks.
Yeah, so it's too bad that that wouldn't integrate because you're asking them to do more now. You're adding. Asks instead of taking them away.
But did I understand you to say they al- they already have to.
Yeah.
Do that and go into in code. And so this would just be. Pubworks and the new system. They're still doing.
Yeah.
They're still doing two. They are doing two and they'll have to do two.
From the operator's standpoint, it would still be the same.
Unless they could integrate.
Right. If there was a way to do that.
There's an API that could do that.
Um be a Trevor project.
So if we did the payroll uh. Module. They do the payroll. Within the the system, uh they would do the reports. They would do the direct deposit um. Reports uh.
You'll even send manual checks.
Yep. For our three employees that do manual checks um. Employees could, you know, they can look up all their own stuff. W twos from. You know, they need their W two from five years ago or. Or whatever.
They do, they build the W two somewhere, right?
Yes.
And it's available.
It's down. They do the reporting.
Build the W two, it's it's ready. You can look it up.
They would do the quarterly reporting, et cetera.
The quarterly reportings and the things. So basically, what you're looking is anything that. I guess to me, it seems like the. That payroll function, the truly, what does it cost us to pay one employee? All the various functions, the annual reporting, the quarterly reporting. You know, the sending the checks or the, you know, we file with the IRS, we have to file documents with the IRS. That goes away because it's. Already captured all that information. Now there's, you know, it'll be important to, you know. I think Lori, you might want to mention about how you were talking about, or maybe it's later in the slide, about how you were gonna roll out. This piece versus that piece.
Uh yeah, well, it's sort of later, we can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll we'll come back to that thought.
Is that, is that in the thirty hours that you're? All of those other things that they have to do, taking care of the nine forty one reports and all that, is that in the thirty hours?
No, no.
No, that's just particularly payroll. Or each payroll session, not the, then we take the reports and we have to pull those up and out of in code and do. Other things to those. No, no time yet, but it's. It's time consuming and one of the things that I think is. Scary is that automates that process so that no matter. Those quarterly and annual type filings and those things become. A thing of the past because they take that on and it's done like clockwork. We're not having to do it inside and oops. You know, Sally's out, so we're not gonna be, I didn't realize we had to do that. So is it? Is it people doing this? Is it outsourced or is it just the computer is doing it?
It's automated. It's it's the system that's gonna do it.
But they'll, they'll have somebody looking.
Yes, right.
Well, and internally still too, and it still requires like Sean to go in. And approve all her employees' time and make sure it's. It's correct. And then submit it. Um it's easier to pull it back if you make a mistake and say, oh. Let's.
Pay Vicky this week. Let's let's track that back.
Yeah, that and and the, you know, if we have to have an extra uh payroll. You know, midweek or something like that. It it does all of those. Um allows employees to go in and maybe calculate what they um their uh. Pay could be if they reduce their W four down to here and and manipulate those kind of things as well. Okay, next slide. So some of the vendors that we compared, Bamboo HR, UKG, Nioga. And then, of course, uh in code ten. Does um. They have an HR module. So Bamboo HR um. Is most cost effective. It's also our um recommended. Program. After going through uh multiple vendors. The thing about Bamboo HR. Um that's different from all the others is it's a month by month service. There's no contract. Of course, we'd still have the implement implementation fee. And of course. Getting all these vendors together and then they keep coming up with, well, here, let's have a little better plan and. Let's see, I'll lower my costs a little bit to make you go with me. And whatever, but. Bamboo now has reduced their implementation fee if we decide big Thursday. But they allow, it's a per employee per cost. So this cost is based off of a hundred and fifty employees. And it's month to month. And you start out with your human resources program and get all the information into there. Um and then if you elect the the payroll portion. Then that would come in at a later date after all the information is in. In the system so that you're ready to go. So I took the annual, which is forty six thousand seven twenty one. That includes the implementation fee at the reduced price. Because I'm optimistic and uh. Of course, it wouldn't be that for twenty twenty five because we're already half the year over and and. It it would have to be. Once we get into implementation on on. And using those systems, uh then that money would come into play or the cost. Just to mention in code ten, which we're talking about going to next year. It uh. Part of this is included in their fee for in code ten. However, it's not a true human resources system. Um it doesn't interface or do what all the bamboo does or even the other programs with the. The training and the uh. Compensation and the. Employee evaluations. Um about all it does is allow us a little bit, employees a little bit more leeway to look at, look at their stuff.
They're they're seeing a great way. You go to.
Yes.
Over here, we'll we'll cross the page.
Yes. Um still with an uploaded file into the financials.
So if um if there, so you based these numbers off of a hundred and fifty employees, but. When I looked at the. The spreadsheet you did for us on staff, it really looks like we only have a hundred and twenty seven. We have a hundred and forty five on the books. But we're right now, currently, the way that I read your spreadsheet is currently employed is a hundred and twenty seven. That was the total I gave on your spreadsheet.
I I'm.
That was a couple of weeks ago. That was your spreadsheet from.
Which spreadsheet?
The personnel cost where you you took out which employees or what positions we had open for.
Oh, for the full time employee equivalents?
Yeah.
Versus actual employees. Because you get charged even for like your part time employees or your. Because it would be. Like for the month of June, if we had a hundred and forty five employees on the books, it would be a. A hundred and forty five. That they would charge us for.
So in your other form.
As opposed to a hundred and twenty seven must have been employee, full time employee equivalents?
So that means if we've got two half time people, they count as one.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't realize that either, that may be.
So but it, let's say that we, um somebody leaves and we don't replace that position. Does that cost go down?
Yes. It's a month to month cost based off of.
Which is just now in code, if we stick with in code nine. It's an additional module of seven thousand. But in in code ten, that would go away. It would be no matter if we had a thousand more employees or thirty less employees.
I can't tell you how that would go with in code ten. I did um contact other counties that are currently using in code ten. Not necessarily with uh bamboo, but just as their HR. Um modules and um. They still do a lot of things manually or still dump things into their sales spreadsheets to manipulate reports or. Databases.
And with this, Bamboo, you don't think you'll have to do that?
It provides a huge, huge benefit over.
And it does integrate with both Tyler and and code.
Tyler is.
Tyler is in code.
It's all the same thing.
Yes.
Tyler is a platform.
So uh. Yeah, with any of them, um.
Because reading through I daily's recommendations, they reference those, in my opinion, how I'm reading it as two different. Things. They go back.
Their company name, code is the software. So Tyler also has document, also has Tyler Assessor. We use a lot of different Tyler products.
So Chrissy, do you want to go to the next um? These are just a little snapshot shot, excuse me, of some of the the things that. That are offered. This is in bamboo, just to give you a, just a quick glimpse of of some of the stuff. So this would be where an employee would clock in and it tells them how much time off they have right there and any um. Things that they have to remember or do on the on the left there. Uh next slide, uh this is where they would request time off and then it would go to their supervisor. For approval. Um the next slide is where we could create a job. We could say um. Like maybe it's for a department head and we are, we're casting the net out there. Um worldwide and we could. Say, there's some additional questions. Are you willing to move to Rio Blanco County? Are you willing to? Work.
That's most of it right there, starting to handle the work.
Yeah, any questions on that we want. Them to answer before they even apply to Rio Blanco County.
Rank your work ethic.
Yeah, and we could say, just with a click of the button, say, we require a cover letter, we recover, require, uh you know. Yeah, your highest education, et cetera.
Okay, so let me ask you back up one, just one second. So. Existing employees and and Kelly had asked about this. So there's a job position open and I want to apply for it. It's an internal position. Would that still allow me, like, I've got to do my resume, I've got to do this. It would. We could put those parameters for internal people also that want to may change jobs. Got that purely legal position, though.
All I, all except for the administrative.
Um so Ben, let's see. Yep, so this is like, once we hired, here's your first day, here's when to show up, where to show up, who to contact. Remen- remember to bring your ID because we actually still have to see that physically with for I nine, et cetera.
Oh, your manager will treat you to lunch on your first day.
I know. We can do any kind of little saying or anything on there. That's an email that a applicant would give. Uh the next one is just kind of an idea of a pay stub and an employee can download or print that. The next one is is just kind of a a payroll snapshot. Um with some reminders at the bottom to to make sure we get everything. Done in there that we were supposed to. The next one uh reports that payroll can run. uh organizational chart. Yep, automatically built.
That's pretty cool.
We looked at software for that before, by the way, also.
Yeah. Oh. It's just incorporates kind of all the things we've been talking about. For, and then compen, go ahead.
On this compensation benchmark, um you were asking earlier, how do we compare to X Y Z companies? How do we compare to uh other private industry? You can actually customize your reports here. Once you have the ba- benchmarks, you can tell it what you want to compare against right here.
And then, um. And then this tells about, you know, uh pay increases, how you get a bonus increase, equity increase, et cetera, if we set that up. Um, assets. So this would keep track of what we kind of do in Monday right at the moment where we've issued um a laptop, your keys, uh a car, a phone, et cetera.
Also lets the employee see what devices they have checked out to them. So they know what, or so or so their supervisor knows so that can know what to turn back in.
Yeah, what? Um, then the performance, um management assessment, your self-assessment, um when they were due, et cetera. And then um the next one with like employee.
It's that report I was asking you for.
I'm sorry?
It's the report I was asking you for.
It would keep track of where they were, wasn't when they left.
And then.
Why do you go?
Just analytics on our employee turnover, et cetera, just at the click of a button. Okay, conclusion. Are you tired of listening to me? I'm tired of talking.
Oh, no, he just throws these suit with laptops. I think he's all done.
Oh.
It just, it just told me I was doing it.
I know.
And she's only on pa- on, you know, page twenty four of a hundred and nineteen, just for the record.
No, no.
That's what it's showing.
That's just all the backup information for you if you wanted to look.
I see conclusion right there.
Yeah, or the conclusion.
Um, one thing I'd like to just kind of mention, so from what Laura said is that if we were to choose the module, what she's recommending is Bamboo, it is monthly. She could start to get her H R files and things like that processing. We don't have to jump in and do the payroll module. That is a different thing that we could see how we like it because we're paying month to month. If it's something that we don't like, there's not the commitment time period. Another thing that this will affect is of course the clerk and, no, it won't affect the clerk and report. It's only have the three checks. So the payroll part of it.
So they they'll send them out.
Yeah, they'll turn around and send them out. Uh, so that will affect, yeah, it will affect that. Um, the W nines or the W twos, all that kind of things that we are fixing postage to, those costs go away because it's then again, it's automated. So, but it doesn't have to be an immediate thing today. We have some things. Um, I think it'll be important for finance to take a look at it and say, yeah, this is the system that looks, you know, we want to recommend and move forward with it, but how does that affect them? And then be able to say, okay, we need to make sure it answers these questions.
We did include them in the, in the um demonstrations. And yeah, and the feedback I got was good.
So um, so that's one thing i- is even if we say no to the payroll side, we could still say yes to the H R side.
You're cracking me up.
Yeah. And even if we did payroll and you went, we we gave it a, a strong shot and I mean, really tried and it, four months, it's like, you know, this isn't working for us. Then you stop paying for that module.
I'm excited because it looks to me like we can take you down to a halftime.
I agree. I think we could just keep it now.
Along those same lines, you know, Doug, I mean, that is something where this would not be relying on Laura, where she truly does have this, you know, the database that she uses, that she created.
Yeah.
Um, it does that thing that we talked about, May Bailey, of making sure that, you know, there is an easy way to move that over should Laura win the lottery and decide to never go back.
Transition plan.
More likely to fight the lottery.
I'm excited about it. I think I'm ready to go. Let's move forward.
And again, this will come out of the funds we set aside for the twenty twenty by budget. So it's already been allocated. Um, we just got to get the, I have funding to it, so.
So if we tell them by Thursday, they'll drop three thousand dollars off the.
You were really bribing them, weren't you?
We.
I put on potential approvals.
I guess we'll need a motion.
Mm-hmm.
So I would move that we approve the purchase of the Bamboo H R program. Including payroll?
Yes.
Okay, including payroll. Module, whatever it's called.
The others aren't like going to.
Yeah.
And how to do that.
Yep.
If we want to try.
That would be my motion.
Hold on, second thing.
And and I Bailey did recommend this, that it the payroll component. So I think that that's that would take care of one of those things that we need to get.
That's the first one I've ever heard Laura call the role. Scritchville, hi, Overton.
Hi.
Oh, Heron.
Hi. Where's the buzzer?
I know. Run, go, go, quick.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
It's exciting.
All right, moving on to line item G. Or no, sorry, H.
Yeah, H.
That's you took.
Yeah, um, I'm chairman. I make a motion that we approve the ratification of a letter of opposition to the proposed ninety one thousand pound truck pilot program.
And I will second that.
What that program is, is there, the um feds are trying to make it legal to run trucks ninety one thou- right now, it's eighty thousand. And they're going to move it up to ninety one. And I sent this to uh Thad and Thad had a a reaction. He doesn't want the county. It it it's going to increase the bridges and the, and the maintenance on all of our roads and stuff and and I think it'll do it across the United States.
I think we have already. Was it, how many bridges did you say that did not currently meet that weight limit when they're?
Three or four.
That's a lot of weight.
So I, I I I'm behind it. I I, it's ridiculous. Let's put during that.
Sounds good.
Please call the role.
Oh, Heron.
Hi.
Scritchville.
Hi.
Overton.
All right.
And next we have um the consideration of the, oh, just sorry. We're moving on to line item I.
And that one must be me, huh? Okay, so I'd move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four cost allocation plan.
Well, second thing.
I have a motion and a second. Who was going to update? Is it you or Lisa that's on this?
Second bit. I can mention to you, I don't know if Lisa, unless Lisa, do you want to address what the cost allocation plan is or do you want me to do that?
I'll let you go ahead and start and I can ask, answer questions.
So we do this every year on the cost allocation plan. Um, that's actually done out by um uh, I'm trying to think of the name of the company that does that, not S G M. My brain's running that.
M G T.
M G T. Thank you, M G T. So what they do is they take what uh was the budget and then allocate what those funds were spent for. And if we're in compliance and if everything matches up. Um, and so basically it, L- Lisa, why don't you take it? Because I'm probably murdering that. But the, I sent an email about it.
So it's a, it's a document that they put together based on prior year activity that details how the county um distributes or allocates its indirect costs amongst various departments and programs, basically. So all those indirect costs are things that um apply to multiple different departments and programs and can be allocated to those departments so that they can be covered by grant reimbursements and things like that.
The chair federal compliance, right?
Yes.
Federal fee.
Does this?
Yeah.
Who requires this? A fed or somebody?
It's the federal government, so it's the uniform guidance um that counties are required to follow when they receive federal grants.
Okay.
Next.
Thank you.
All right, will you please call the role?
Scritchville. Hi.
Overton.
Hi.
Oh, Heron.
Hi. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Moving on to line item J.
I'm chairman. I make a motion that we can s- uh approve the appointing of A G N C fiscal agent for the R P I grant funds.
And I will second it.
You want to tell them about that?
So this, if I um so as some of you may recall, right as I started as commissioner, I think it was January or February, we had a presentation from um Keystone on the effort to um do a recreation plan. And that's what we knew it as, as the rec- I mean, their presentation was all about recreation. Um, between us and Moffett and Doug had reached out to both of our towns anyway. And there was very little, if any, local engagement, specifically in Rio Blanco County. And so both counties sent a letter asking for them to cease and desist. We really didn't feel comfortable with um route in the Front Range and potentially Grand Junction telling people what are determining the recreation opportunities in Rio Blanco County. And thankfully, they actually listened to us. They put a halt to that. And then they come back to us and said, okay, but we, they're in order to qualify for this fifty million dollars that's out there through G O Co., then you still need to put together one of these recreation plans for your um two counties. They they grouped us together, their region, I guess you would call it. So we have um in, so in conversations with them, and I was really impressed, D N R's second command, um Tim Mock come over and met with us here in Meeker and talked about what kinds of things we could do with that. So he named off um it's conservation, recreation, and keeping agriculture on the ground. Now, I will tell you in any of the reports that I've seen, it doesn't really call out agriculture that much, but I'm holding him to that. Um, so long story short, we're, would like Moffett's going to kind of do their thing. Rio Blanco County will do their thing. And in the end, it'll turn into one report with those two sections in it. The funding needs to be held by an entity that is um that can, you know, divvy out that money. And we figured the A G N C was the best one.
Yeah, we just didn't want Rio Blanco to do it or Moffett to do it because it's, we don't want one to be over the other. And so it makes sense to have A G N C do that. A G N C does a lot of that.
Yeah.
So.
And so it sounds like tomorrow at a meeting, they'll verify all of that, but they're willing to take that on. And then we will develop then what that will look like. And just real quickly, I want to, you know, yes, we will absolutely have to go out to the community. I mean, this isn't county driven. This is, the county is going to hire somebody to do this. Most likely, um or do it internally, but um likely do a contractor that would need to facilitate. Um, and I won't get into, ideally, we're not creating a new, spending hours and hours and months on creating a new plan. Let's look at what we've already got and build upon that is my vision. So um they're happy to do that. So I would be excited.
Moffett is already has a guy that's been working on their stuff. We're going to have to figure out somebody in Rio Blanco, but there were, it was just under a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, they got it down to a hundred and thirty three thousand between the two.
So uh we're going to get half of that to hire somebody to put this thing together. And and we don't have to spend all that on the person, but it gives us a pool to to help put this together and work with. A G N C is just going to be the fiscal agent, I think. And then Moffett and Rio Blanco will work together to submit a plan.
Right. Exactly.
Okay.
So it it what turned out to be in what we thought was only recreation. Yes, it has to be recreation, but we all understand there's going to need to be conservation and ag on the ground in order to have anything to recreate on.
Yeah. All right, uh will you please call the role?
Oh, Heron.
All right.
Scritchville. Hi. Overton.
All right. Oh, what was that? Okay. Uh, so we will recess from the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Board of Health.
Michaela, what do you, what took you so long to get here?
Somebody, oh, Michaela.
All right. You ready? Okay, can we call the meeting to order and approve the minutes from the last meeting?
We are calling the meeting to order at one forty. Um, and did either of you have any changes to the minutes? That for the January twenty eighth, twenty twenty four minutes?
So you want to make a motion?
Oh.
You asked the question. So I would move that we approve the uh minutes of January.
I'll second that.
Um, hold on. Needs to say twenty twenty five of twenty twenty five.
Oh, does it say twenty twenty four?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so that's so.
That's correct.
That's correct. Yes. Uh, all those in favor? Yeah.
All right.
Bye. Any opposed? Any abstained?
Um, just a couple housekeeping items. I am doing a couple meetings kind of back to back. The meeting that I did in April, um I thought was going to be a board health meeting, then it ended up just being a regular commissioner meeting. So now I'm just doing a little bit of catch up here. So I'm going to be doing a meeting right now and then another one in August. Lot of me.
Couple of months here.
That's okay.
Um, so update on childhood vaccination schedule for twenty twenty five. I did want to let you know that they did take, the C D C has removed the COVID vaccine from the recommended um childhood vaccine schedule. Um, for children six months to seventeen years old that are not immunocompromised, it has been shifted from recommended to shared clinical decision making. So basically what that means is I couldn't even give them a vaccine. If I wanted to, I would need to tell them, you need to go to your healthcare provider and talk to them about it. So um since it's not in the recommended schedule anymore, we don't need to contract with anyone and we don't need to carry it ourselves. Uh, we are waiting to see if they're going to remove the COVID vaccine from the adult schedule as well. Um, that's what we have been hearing is going to happen, but it has not happened yet. We're just waiting on on that. Um, update on measles. There has been a rumor going around that we have measles outbreak. We do not have measles outbreak. Um, the Meeker Hospital had contacted us saying that people were getting ahold of them and really concerned about uh about that. So that's when they contacted us and asked. Um, we do not have even an exposure in Meeker or Ranely. So um just want to just squash any rumors about that. We def- we do not have measles. Um, if we did, we do keep up on our EpiTrax, which is a database that notifies us of all of the communicable diseases. Um, our contract with Mesa County, they also check that really regularly. Um, the state would be calling us, so it's not like we wouldn't. Um, the state would be calling us, so it's not like we wouldn't know if there was some. Um, just wanted to update on that. Any questions about those things? I don't.
I don't.
Um, and then just wanted to go over some of the grants. I know that it's been, um, there has been some cuts to funding, especially the federal funding. So our OPHP grants, um, we are fully funded on our local planning and support dollars. That's our general public health funds. And we have been fully funded on that. The only thing that we're waiting on is our maternal child health, which is roped into our local planning and support dollars. Um, but for the actual public health fund, we are fully funded for that. So that's good. Um, our infrastructure grant is also fully funded. Um, we may do a reallocation on the funds for that to extend the grant to twenty twenty-seven because of all of these cuts. Uh, right now, it's only going to twenty twenty-six, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. And so if we keep seeing some, some funding cuts, we might try to reallocate some of those funds just to make sure that we can extend that a little bit, um, just for protection for us. Um, our CDPHE grants, so our immunizations, we are partially funded right now. We only have, uh, money through the state, which, um, is about six thousand less than what we usually have total, not six thousand less, just from the state. Um, but we are fully funded through the state, but we're waiting for federal funds and we don't know when that notification is gonna come out. So they are projecting that we will be fully funded for our ends. Um, our FEP and EPR, so emergency preparedness and response, we are not funded currently. Um, so we are, the state extended our contract, our current contract to August thirty-first. Um, but we are unsure when we will get notification for the, for our FEP and EPR one. So that one is kind of up in the air. I think it had a lot to do with and everything that's going on with FEMA right now. So I'm still waiting on that.
Um, should I run really quick with that one?
Yeah.
Because we contract with Mesa County on that for part of that.
Yes.
What, what would that look like for us? Do we, if, if it doesn't get funded, then do we need to end that contract or like what?
Review it, make sure that we, is we could either use other funds to help with that or to, you know, so we would have to make a decision based on that.
Would you use some of the infrastructure monies towards that?
I, I think that would, we would probably have to use our local planning and support dollars. Um, just based on, yeah, I'm not a lawyer, but just based on what I know about that contract.
Yeah, I have to look at the contract again, but.
I think that would probably be a better fit for those types of funds. Um, but yeah, let's look at it and see. Um, child vitality, we're fully funded. Um, and then our federal grants, the WIC grants, it sounds like we'll be fully funded. Of course, that one won't start until October, so uh, with all of the state grants lagging, I don't think that we're gonna know quite yet on that one. Um, but they're projecting that it's gonna be fully funded. We're just not sure of the amount. Um, so hopefully it's not much less because they've already lessened it every year since I've been here. So we'll see on that one. Um, and then our SAMSA grant, Dawn, do you wanna go? Do you wanna talk about that or do you want me to?
Go, go ahead and start and then.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, so the SAMSA grant, it looks like will be eliminated from the federal budget. And it's a grant that we um, had last year and will end at the end of September of twenty twenty-five. And they are not projecting that they, that they will be renewed at this time. So, um, currently, we don't have anyone in that position anymore. So if that did go away, it's honestly not going to affect us at this point.
What is the position?
Um, we did have someone hired in that position for that grant specifically.
And what was the, what was the job date?
Oh, it was the youth, youth mental health program manager. So they were gonna contract, but not contract, but work with the schools and the rec centers and do like after, after-school programs and things like that.
Like education.
Yeah, education, substance use prevention, things like that. Um, but it looks like that will be eliminated from the budget.
Now, since we had somebody hired, did we get reimbursed through that grant for that position up to date?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, yes. We, we talked about when she left, whether or not to rehire that now or to wait to see what was happening. Uh, with that, we decided that probably ought to wait if the program's gonna go away. In October, it doesn't make a lot of sense to try to fill up her, her period of time.
Because especially now, even during the time that Dawn and I discussed, it looked, it was looking like it wasn't gonna be renewed and now it's really.
Pretty sure it's not.
Pretty sure it's not. It's gonna be totally.
Which is what we kind of predicted because it was a temporary position anyway. I mean, that's how it was posted, right?
And that's how, how we did it. It's a temporary grant-funded position.
That's all I have for now. Um, in August, we will be having a person from the state with the retail food program coming out to do a presentation. Uh, we did some education for the county and, um, all of the restaurant owners and workers were able to come to this training. And so he just wanted to give you guys some statistics of how, how much it helped our communities. And, um, just kind of an overview of retail food. So that's what will be on the agenda in August. But for today, that's all I have.
An important question.
Thank you.
No, thank you. So we will adjourn at one fifty as Board of Health and go back to being Board of County Commissioners. Thanks, Michaela. Uh, moving on to resolutions, line item A.
I'm chairman. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five as in a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Rio Blanco County, Colorado. Amending the Rio Blanco County master fee schedule to include twenty twenty-five updated fees.
I will second it for the sake of discussion.
I have a motion and a second on this resolution. Earlier in the work session, we had the discussion of leaving, uh, the, I wanna make sure I'm doing this right, leaving the fairgrounds the way it is currently. Not changing any of the master fees, but updating the rural exemptions. And then, of course, clerk and recorder, we don't have a choice.
So I would like to amend the motion to, um, I wanna say it. Include, or to approve only the clerk and recorder fees. Would be my motion. It's like, I mean, my amended motion, let's put it that way.
Okay, I'm going to second that for the where we can discuss it.
So my reasoning for doing that is that I, um, I don't think we basically, fees are taxes without people's consent. So in general, in principle, um, I don't believe in raising fees if we can, if there's any way possible. And right now, our, we're being forced to because the state has raised those fees. And by the way, those fees will go to the state. The county's portion of it does not get increased, correct?
Correct.
So that is only the state fees and required by law. Um, so the fairground fees and at this, uh, the two that have been proposed besides the state requirements is from the planning, let's see, planning department.
No, building.
Building Department and fairgrounds. And I just don't feel like right now is the time to increase fees. Um, simply a matter of principle.
On the other hand, the building department budget went up last year. Right? And it went up because we got another FTE because they were getting busy and this is one of the reasons they're getting busy. And I think that that two hundred and fifty dollar fee for exemptions is, um, it, it puts the onus back on the person that is, uh, doing the exemption and thus reduces the taxes for everyone else. That's my opinion.
Because we're, they're doing the work regardless at, with the rural exemptions. They're still having to go through the process, staff's time. Go ahead.
One of the things I want to make clear, especially for the public, is that this does not mean that it's being permitted identical to the way that regular, like say, construction of homes is being permitted, uh, where there's inspections on the footings and the, 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 that, all the different aspects of it. So it's not saying that we're gonna all of a sudden step in and now there's not this rural cabin exemption. Truly, that rural cabin exemption is as much work as a home. However, the building department isn't going to be doing inspections on it. Um, there are still some better, uh, state things that still have to be, you know, uh, done from the state level, but it's not changing the way Rio Blanco County is going to do that. The only things that that will change is basically making sure that we have that documented, um, especially on the rural cabin exemption, making sure that those that what we said is exempt truly is exempt. And then that's just basically giving us that payment of saying it is, it's still expensive to do, but it's not gonna make requirements or build requirements in, oh, now you have to do this and your footings aren't, you know, they're too close or whatever those exemptions require. I just want to make sure that that was very clear. There's two different things. It, it's.
Well, let me ask you this. So if I'm trying to, I need to get a permit. Yes, they have to go through the process to verify that this is a situation that I need to permit. But now they, they also have to go out and check it at least once, if not multiple times. And they're not getting charged for those additional trips. So in reality.
Whether they give.
Um, if you wanna look at it by the hour to the person fees, the person that's getting the, not getting, that's getting a an actual permit, is still getting a number of hours that they're not having to pay additional fees to. So and I did ask Matt about, okay, so compared to other counties, what are our permitting fees like? I mean, higher, lower, whatever. And he said, we are much lower than others. So, again, Rio Blanco County is using your tax dollars to help do that, but that's what we hire staff for. Um, so, again, that's just a, an additional thought to consider, but arrest my case. It's a principal issue for me, sorry.
And it is a plan review. So for every building, whether it's rural cabin exempt, whether it's a ag build, agriculture exemption, they still have to submit a plan so that we can look at the plan and say, yes, it meets that or not. So they're still doing that piece of the work. They're still going out to do, you know, um, some inspections or, you know, so it, they're just as intensive, not maybe just as intensive. They border on that line that there's still a lot of work to be done.
So, any more discussion?
Um, no, I'm not really hung up on it. I just think that it's, it's, uh, reasonable.
So we'll need to vote on the amended um, that included
only approving only clerk and recorder fee increases.
Right.
How I worded it.
Your main motion is improve the fee schedule and then amendment is the, only approve that portion of the fee schedule related to clerk and recorder.
So we will need to vote on the amended.
The amended.
Okay. Just see, will you please call the roll?
Scritchfield?
Hi.
O'Hara?
No.
Overton?
No. And I need to make another amendment to the mo- original motion that we only include the,
Building.
Building Department exemptions.
Cabin exemption.
Cabin exemption fee.
With the clerk and recorder state.
With the clerk and recorder, well, yes.
Will you say that again, please? Sorry.
That, that, uh, the, um, okay, let me restate.
Mm-hmm.
That the would exclude the fair, fairgrounds fee increases. How's that?
除掉the fairgrounds.
So include the clerk and recorder state increases and include the building apartment states?
Yes.
Okay, so men with, um, would, would exclude fairground exemption but include the building and the clerk and recorder fees.
Oh, exclude the fairgrounds fees, I think would be the, not exemption.
Thank you.
The fairground.
Fairground fees.
Which is a change from the previous.
Yep, okay, including building and.
Fee.
Fairground fee.
Mm-hmm.
Increases.
Fee changes, yeah. It was actually a fee change because they broke out, though I would say fee changes.
Mm-hmm.
Wait. Flip it over.
Other piece of paper?
Got some other stuff here. Okay. We're good. O'Hara?
Oh, we didn't have a second on it.
Doug said first.
Okay.
Sharon can second it, I guess.
I'm seconding it then. Now, what can we call the roll?
Uh, O'Hara?
Hi.
Overton?
All right.
Scritchfield?
No.
Motion passes.
Oh, now we have to go back to the very. The very first. This is an exercise. To make sure you're on your.
So the main.
Definitely happened to me.
The main motion passes.
Four of them that they're gonna do.
It's a lot more fun than that.
Yes, it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm talking about this, what we're doing.
Okay.
And now we need to call the parole on the first one.
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
Okay. Scritchfield?
I'm staying.
O'Hara?
Hi.
Overton?
Hi.
Perfect. Okay, now we can move on to, uh, we don't have any public hearings and we have other business. And we have county commissioner updates. I know you provided updates to us, Ms. Vicki. We didn't have you on here because um, you were not supposed to be on here.
I wasn't sure about you here, so.
You got released?
Mm-hmm.
Got out of jail.
Did you wanna do a quick one or, or are you feeling okay with the, cause you did, you did some.
I admitted my report, I think, uh, we pretty much addressed everything in there. I can't think of anything that I need to bring to your attention at this point, other than, and I'm sure you probably mentioned about the county tour.
Will you make sure and send that to me too?
Mm-hmm, please. Yes.
Okay.
I will do that.
Thank you. Um, so now county commissioner updates. Um, I'll go first. Um, had some NACO webinars, one of them particularly being on HR one, the big beautiful bill. Got some more detailed information from them on that, mainly around Medicaid and SNAP. Um, we're gonna be in a world of hurt if that bill goes through on the SNAP and Medicaid
Hmm.
component. Um, there's a lot of variables, especially with SNAP, um, that makes me a little nervous, so. Um, I did the mandated reporter training. CDEHS came to town and um, did our mandated reporter for child welfare. They did an amazing job. Um, it really broke down where our risks are, um, when you don't, you know, report when you're a mandated reporter. Not every. Broke down where our risks are, um, when you don't, you know, report when you're a mandated reporter. Not everybody is a mandated reporter. So, um. So anyway, I thought they did a wonderful job and we appreciated them doing it on either side of the county. Um, and we actually, I don't know what the turnout was in Meeker, but Rangeley had a full. Pretty much a full room, um, which I like to see. And then we had law enforcement school. Um, their uh, town people. So we had a mixture of, of different people with ourselves. Um, I um, attended a B B behavioral health advisory committee. Um. This is a committee that was put together by Hickpuff or for Hickpuff. To be looking at the behavioral health. Um. Program at the state level. Um, they were sued. Um, Hickpuff was sued by. A plaintiff on the services that are being provided for the behavioral health area. So. There are some things that Hickpuff has to get guidance from these committees and there's. The committee, the advisory committee, and then there's these subcommittees underneath and we all got together and had a conversation with some recommendations from. Um, then did the community tour, which I thought turned out very well. Um. I, I would like to see us do it again, though, and really touching on all of the assets. As, as we were driving through Meeker, I was pointing out to the people on my bus. That's, that's an asset or a, the building that we're having to manage that. Oh, you do? And they were kind of shocked. And I said, those two that we visited on either side.
Yeah, that's not it.
More than that covers. And, and so I, I mean, one, let's try to do it when it's cooler.
Little more wind?
Maybe just being on the bus and kind of driving through some of those. And not really having to stop. I mean, we did a lot of, like, there was a lot of history given and I really appreciated Eric giving that background. So people truly understand how we got to this place with those, um, you know, the fairgrounds and uh. On either side of the county and, and the airports. So. That he did, he did do an amazing job. Uh, Thad and Antina did as well when we were out at the fairgrounds and Nick as well. Um, that was staff and of course always meet with Ms. Vicky, which I enjoy my Friday mornings.
It's early morning Friday morning.
It's our early morning Friday coffee conversation. Those are my updates.
So I also met with Vicky, directors and some staff, keep up on things. I had a, uh, I attended a meeting that Dawn and I both attended with several counties on the western slope. To address, uh, we're going to send the governor a letter. Uh, telling him that we're not going to do some of his unfunded mandates. And see how he reacts to that. Um. We're going to uh, see. Yeah, that's pretty much what that was. And, and then I did the county assets tour. That's what I did.
And that's actually going beyond the western slope. We're trying to get as many counties uh tied into that as we can. And I. Even one of my backup county commissioners also has attended to that one as well. So they're, they're trying to make it as universal with the counties as we can.
More people keep asking to get on it.
Yeah.
Good, good, good. I like it.
So if we can get enough counties, maybe we have more pull than if it's just a few rural counties on the western slope. Hopefully.
Is that something that we potentially need to bring up at C C I and?
They said, they, C C I came up in that and they have, uh. Didn't want to do that because. They thought there was opposition on the other side and it would muddy the waters.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they wanted to.
Is that?
Yeah, that's pretty clear. They want to make it clean on that. And, and they think if they, if C C I comes in one way or the other on the thing, then it'll. Uh, uh, be different representation. What they want is kind of a, uh, I guess holistic, for lack of another word. Where the counties that, that are interested get together. And what they're trying to do is they're trying to do where it's counties across political spectrum. Uh, you know, liberal and conservative counties all have unfounded mandates to which they're struggling to fund. And so that's, they're trying to make it where it's not as political, more of a, the. Well, you're, you're making us spend money that we don't have on things, you know, that it's the state's responsibility to do.
I don't know what our numbers are, but Mesa County was seven million dollars this year.
Unfunded mandates.
Um, Dawn, as far as that piece of it goes, what about um, a typical tactic that. Like the governor could use would be to take out on a small county.
Right. And, and, and that's one of the things that I brought up is the, the, the fact that. You know, the bigger counties like Jefferson County and Mesa County and El Paso County. Some of the other big counties have a lot more resources than, than the smaller counties, Rio Blanco and. And, you know, you know, the western or the eastern plains counties and things like that. The state has oftentimes, and I've seen this in water as much as anything, where if they want to make a precedent, they, they go after a small. Uh, a water company and then they, they get a decision they like, then they start going after the bigger, bigger guys.
Using the old guys.
Yeah, precedent. So what, what I'm trying to do is. Say, hey, we, in order to sign on to this as little counties, we, we want a commitment from the bigger counties. If the little counties gets sued. You're going to assist us in the, in the lawsuit. Because that's one of the things, you know, every time we've sued the state and, and anything, this, we've, we've been kicked out as counties pretty fast. So, but if they sue us, you always have a right to defend yourself. And there's several cases that basically say. You can't take away uh, an entity's right to defend. So if they sue us, then we have the ability to defend.
Bobby Daniels is the, this is kind of her brainstorm and she's, she's on board with this.
She's Mesa County, yeah.
So. Um, reaching out to other counties. Probably need to get with her and see who's all on board then, so that.
Or Todd or.
And we're, we're working on trying to get a compilation of those counties.
Yeah, the uh, legal assistant for Todd is putting all that together.
Okay.
Yeah. I can expect it to see something more final now, but I haven't, so.
There's just a few in the southern part that I'm pretty good friends with. I'd like to see them. If they want to be part of it, I can text them and ask them.
I saw something in, in our chat on Todd that had that stuff in there. Todd is in it that way.
Okay. In the chat, huh?
Yeah. I don't know why you sent it that way, but. It's hard.
Yeah.
It's hard.
I'll reach out if I can find it.
Thank you. Is that it? That's it?
Okay. Alrighty. So, as I mentioned earlier, did the CPW Commission, um, attended that, um. So a little bit more detail on that. Um. So, first time I have ever seen a senator, a state senator testify at a CPW Commission meeting and so. Um, but I think it's Senator. Um, Mark Catlin, yeah, Mark Catlin is a senator. So from Montrose was there and testified. And as well as myself and Perry Will. And, um. When it was all said and done, they had at the end of the meeting, a motion was made. To remove those problem wolves, that pack of problem wolves that have the clear creek wolves, which by the way. If you follow the trail, there is, so they were brought into Colorado already as a predating. As a predating wolves.
They're predating.
And then, um. They. Were basically proven to be as a pack depredating in, um.
Jackson.
No, no, they were the ones south of there, um.
Not Grand.
Grand County, yeah, in Grand County. And the plan said you wouldn't have um, depredating wolves brought in. And it says if there are, if they are caught, you know, and verified that they've been depredating in the state. Then they will not be. Re- relocated. I mean, the plan is very clear on that. CPW collected, gathered those wolves. And by the way, the landowners where they got them up there asked very clearly if they were going to relocate them. And they said they would not. Because the landowner said we would not let them be removed if they were going somewhere else. CPW kept them over winter and released them in Pitkin County.
Is that the ones that they had in the isolation?
Yep. And they released them in Pitkin County and it is that pack that killed in Pitkin County. And then they ended up having to kill that wolf finally after. I mean, there was, there was no way around that. So, um, it was actually a motion to remove that pack. Unfortunately, the chair ruled that out of order.
Reader of firestorm in the meeting.
How could that be? But anyway, thankfully, another front range, um. Murphy Robinson. Said, with all due respect, Mr. Chair, I. Asked, because I would like to second that motion, so I asked for a legal opinion. They never did get it. Because there was all kinds of chi, you know, they turned it over to. The director hijacked that directed question and he explained all the reasons not to. As did the attorney, very little, just kind of agreed. And it was quite the conversation. I mean, it's worth going and watching.
Who's the chair?
Um, it was Dallas May.
You're the Dallas?
Yes, and I was real, and I. Well, I won't say in public meeting. Um, so, um. In the end, they never did get to move forward with that. But what they did finally decide to do is that they would have a special meeting on this issue. Um, July seventh now, but it's gonna be virtual. And then as they adjourned the meeting was elections. And so the chair is now Richard Reading. Vice Chair is James Touchton. And the secretary is Eden Barty, the three most liberal members of that committee. Buckle your seats because this is only the beginning of what's gonna happen at that CPW Commission. There's no stopping anything at this point. Marie is now off of it. Dallas May is no longer chair.
Marie Haskett is?
I think she's, she's term limited. Well, she, she didn't get reappointed, whether she's term limited or not, I don't know. There's conversation whether she will remain on it until they get in a, a person. She's still listed as on here. And the reason, so Karen Bailey. Is. A lady that is probably as middle of, I mean, she's leaned very far to the left, but not as far as the rest of them. She did not get reappointed either. And that is scary. Um. And so, like I say, buckle your seats because we ain't seen nothing yet on this wildlife and animal rights issues. Through the CPW Commission.
Is that anything with, well, I guess with Karen Bud Fallon, we really can't because she's now at the federal level. But is there any, like. Thing that a natural resources attorney or. You could lawyer up?
Uh, there's a lot of brains turning and. Plotting because like I say, buckle up. And so. There, there's hopefully brighter minds than mine that are really, really trying to figure out what we can do about this. So, um, moving on. Um, because it's not just wolves. I mean, there's gonna be, I mean, if it's an animal rights issue or a wildlife issue, look out. Um, D N R, um, recreation plan meeting. So interestingly enough, that's what I signed on to the CPW Commission meeting first day for, because they were doing. Uh, an update on that. Um, but, um. I guess what my note is there is we did have one, um, with, um, D N R, the commissioners from. Uh, Mottet County and so forth. And that's where we proceeded with what we talked about as far as with A G and C taking on the fiscal.
Responsibility.
Fiscal responsibility. Yeah, there you go. So. Um, then also attended the Northwest CDC and Innovation Center meeting, um. D H S staff breakfast. I didn't get to go to the training, but I did make it to their breakfast and man, did they put on quite the feet over there.
They do.
And darn good stuff. Um, I did meet with Leaf and tried to get an understanding because they're in the process of finalizing the comprehensive plan and understanding how the land use code. And potentially the land use, um, our, um, natural resource policy fits in underneath those. So I got a little better handle on that. Um, met with staff and constituents. Um, did the tour. And then I went to the Colorado Cattlemen's meeting yesterday. Um, I am chair of the Water Committee while, and, and attended the Wildlife Committee and Public Lands. So. I will tell you, that is one place to gather a lot of really good information. Um, speaking of which, I want to clarify, there is a lot of conversation in the community and I had constituents contacting me about. Fed, the disposal of federal lands.
Oh, yes.
That is out there. There is a lot of conversation, a lot of scare tactics out there. The thing I would say is just acknowledge there, the feds can already and already have designated lands that are to be sold. I mean, there, there are tracts of land that are within, that are like, um. Landlocked and so forth. And, and there may be a variety of other reasons, but in their. Long range plan, they identify parcels of land that are to be sold. So that already happens, has forever and ever. Um, the other thing to keep in mind that initially, especially B L M was. Created to dispose of lands. That was their purpose. And then.
Temporary.
In the sixties, then because they weren't able to get rid of it, then they come back and did this. So. The bill as of, so long story short, there's not a lot of. Very few people think that this will survive. Representative Hurd fought, um, in committee to keep it from being in the House side, lost that fight, but once it got to the House. Now, this is in the big beautiful bill, okay, is where these amendments are happening. Once it got to the House side, they took that out. They, they did get it voted out on the House side. Went to the Senate and Senator Lee from Utah has brought it back in. Here's what it currently says. So when you see those maps that talk about two to three million acres that are, no. Two hundred and fifty million acres that are to be sold. Not true. It reads, um. That the Secretary of Agriculture and Interior go through a process to dispose of between point five percent and point seven five percent. A maximum of three million, three hundred and twenty-two thousand acres, million acres. Um. Between the two of them respectfully, and to, to address local housing and associated community needs. So. The other piece is. There was language in it at one point that if it had a grazing lease on it, it would not be disposed of. That is not currently in there, but Public Lands Council from the National Cattlemen's Beef Association has assurances from enough legislators. That if it moves anywhere and comes back to the House, because it has to come back to the House now that the state amends it, or the Senate amends it. Then they have assurances that that language will get back in there. Well, that is a lot of our federal lands. So. Um. In reality, it sounds like I, I couldn't help but think of, think of the, um. Lands that the county has acquired from B L M. So the property upriver, um. Let's see, I'm not sure.
Columbine Park.
Columbine Park and all of those. Those are the kinds of things that are likely to get put into this. And they have to be, it talks about it would have to be nomin, let's see. With consultation of governors, local governments and tribes. So. While we gotta watch it very carefully. It's not this big scary thing out there that everybody is making it out to be.
I think there's specific reasons for it. I, I think that Mesa County has got a piece going there because uh, they're kind of landlocked. On some of their expansion and it would be a good thing for them. And I think that. Uh, Lee in Utah's got some of the same situations going, so. I, I think that it's being misconstrued, but it could be. Beneficial to.
Right. And, and I think that probably be in like, um, another one, so Nevada around, um. Our wonderful gambling city.
Clark, yeah, I mean, in those, right?
Yeah, Las Vegas. There's a whole lot. I mean, there's B L M's right up against them. That land isn't, I mean. That, that's not being used for a lot, maybe some recreation, but maybe not even some recreation kinds of things. So. I think, um, stay tuned. I will try to stay on top of it or to ask Representative Hurd's office to keep me posted and. I will try to stay on top of it or to ask Representative Heard's office to keep me posted and. Do Cattlemen's and so forth. I'll try to stay on top of that, but.
Thank you.
That's all I know.
All right, we will adjourn at two twenty-three. Thanks, everybody.
That's all I know.